I would have to ask Amanda. I think that would be better to sit down. I was talking to her. And I'm hoping there are some public members available. I think I'll just score thirty-nine. I think I have a very good schedule. I'm going to try to make sure. So how about six million dollars? I think I'm not prepared.
I'll tell somebody more than two.
Mike Paulus, do you need to order?
I'm recording. Where are you?
Okay. Well, we need to order and start with the question.
I think this is the flag of the United States of America. It's a protest with the flag. My nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to announce before we go a few agenda changes.
Is that the bid?
The discussion of winner will be pushed under item F. We get to there. Indigo will arrive at about quarter to ten. And I think that's, that's what I'm hoping. The next thing on the agenda, the next record we're taking from the board meeting will be January twenty-first at the community center, thirty-five hundred Gaywater Drive, at nine AM. Please silence or turn off, off your cell phone. The other.
I'm sorry, I know that says we can't.
That's correct. Because we will decide, we will decide. Okay? Any other questions? How the consent agenda, I need a motion?
No move.
Need discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question. At the last meeting, I have to get a motion. At the last, at the last meeting, I noted a change that I requested for the consent agenda. As far as comment that I made pertaining to Mr. Hultal and working with, yeah, the county. I think it was, and you guys said you would change it, nothing happened. I've worked in general in two years and nothing's happened.
Oh, I sent that down.
I don't care what you did with it, nothing's happened. So I, I will hope for the next meeting, I'll go back and see.
I'll bring it back, the record copy was corrupted.
I'm sorry?
Record copies. I sent it back down.
I assume, when I looked, when I looked at it on the website, under, on notes, is the record copy? Is it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll follow up and check on that, because I did that myself.
Thank you.
Just make sure you get back the supervisor books. Okay, first. You got something, Greg?
Yes. As far as this consent agenda being the minutes of the board meeting, if you were to look at this digested work of what happened, be hard pressed to find, figure out what the heck we did talk about. When Bud Kaufmanberger was up, we talked about medical problems and how it related to membership fees for the golf course. I had specific things to say also, which was not included in the minutes. We had a guest speaker, Pete the Longchamp, who was, who spoke to the board. He wasn't even mentioned in it. I think these minutes are, are worthless. I guess, you know, if you have to, you can go online and read the whole thing. But a synopsis of what was actually said would be very beneficial. What we're getting today, in my opinion, is useless.
Anything else, Chris?
Right, and it's hard to agree to the minutes. When the minutes don't reflect what took place at the meeting. So you can call for a vote, but I know what I'm going to say.
Yes, sir, if I could make a quick comment on that. I'm looking at the board policy, B fourteen-hundred, official minutes filed in the district office to have the time, date, and place of the meeting, the members present, meeting members absent, statement of the topics discussed and decision made, and the names of those who moved in second motions, and the items and results of those votes. So if you want to, want to expand it, we can change board policy and say.
How about, how about we change it back to the way it was?
Oh, I'm sorry. So that's all we were doing is following it for detail, you know, going to the recording and video. We're also timestamping each of those agenda items. We started doing that this week. So we'd be glad to expand it, but it's going to have a budget impact, but.
There's no budget. What's the question?
We were having somebody spend a couple of days to write up the.
I think what Mr. Harris is asking is it goes back to the way it was. I'm asking for the summary to be sufficient enough to know what was discussed. Under the management item, when Bud Kaufmanberger talked, he talked about this medical-related issue. I had extensive things to say about it also. The Longchamp, who wasn't even mentioned as being interviewed, had sufficient things to say. To me, the minutes should reflect at least a good portion of what was supposed to happen. And also, at that, I said that I wanted that on the agenda to discuss the next meeting. My colleagues get it on there, we don't have it on there. We've got enough on there today that it probably won't get, I know it won't get discussed. So again, things are in there that are supposed to be happening. They don't happen, you can't go back and just take a summary, look at it, and understand what was discussed at the meeting. That's my point.
And you wanted it writing, not in video, audio?
I'm not asking for a verbatim reference, but it ought to reflect the topics that were discussed.
And who got up and spoke.
Yes, I believe it's important that we know who spoke at the meeting. I think your point is a little overstated, but not totally off base. I think the, the point that anybody who speaks should be recognized as somebody who was present in any town. The minutes do reflect that there was a discussion regarding reevaluation of the golf policy that was recently after dealing with an injury. So the topic is there. The specificity isn't there. But again, the minutes, in my mind, should be a summary, and the policy manual should be a summary. I don't think we need to have all of the detail in the minutes themselves. You can go back to the record and find anything that we're not sure of. The minutes should be easy to review and make sure that we're on track. On track that, you know, the request that it come back. We have to, golf people bring back a policy recommendation on that. Not on the minute, but maybe in the golf report, I don't know. But, you know, I think there, we're still working out the budget of the new system, but I don't think we're that far off. Can you explain to me what this new system, what the difference is between the new system and the old one?
Well, the, the way the company is doing it is opposed to us paying somebody, you know, right? Yes.
That's about, basically, that's the difference.
Correct.
So really.
And, and all I was going by under that contract, I put it together, is your policy and what the law says, which mimics this. And there wasn't as much detail, so if you want some more.
Right, so this is not really anything, you know that this is just giving different the rest of things that is already given to this program?
Yeah, but the difference is you were paying Chrissy almost three days' labor to do the detailed minutes based on the recording.
And that would pay us something like a hundred and thirty-something thousand.
Wow, they're doing a lot more than just minutes for a hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, this doesn't excuse them not doing it correctly, does it?
Again, I don't think it's that far off. It doesn't excuse it not being correct. We can make corrections as we go along. But, you know, I think part of it is just getting used to the new group and them getting used to us. So it's a new process that we have to work out. Again, I don't think we're that far off. I don't, I don't want to read the verbatim. I have to read the verbatim. I mean, to check something in detail, I can go back.
Go back to the presentation.
We go back to, yes, go back to the way it is, right?
Yeah, but, but we've added timestamps, so it's easier to go back and find what I'm.
Right. And that's very good, I think the timestamps is definitely a plus.
And it's still a work in progress. We switched platforms this week to Microsoft Teams for some of the issues that will allow us people at home to get up and comment. We can see them and participate.
Are we doing that?
We are now.
Wow.
Well, we're, we're doing Microsoft now. We have not agreed to accept public comments online.
But we can, or have consultants that want to make a presentation and can't be in here personally, COVID travel-related. They could make their presentations remotely to the board.
There's a way to discuss that later, I guess.
We can, and previously, though, all you had was audio. People could sit and listen, listen to the board meeting, but there was no video out there.
We have video now, right?
Yeah.
Just, it's a one-shot less.
Important people.
Yeah, you can see all the smiling.
You can see that in spring, you're right.
That's, that's the video I was saying.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with our contractor about looking at adding a little more information to supplement that so it gives you a little more clarity of what is happening at that meeting.
Can you add a comment by the board? What, what are we going to do? What are we going to do?
I'll, I'll ask Infomark to enhance some of the written meeting minutes and move forward from there. It might, it might end up costing a little bit more money, it may not, it may say, okay, we'll do it fine.
I, I'm simply, why would we cost more?
Because they're, they're working from our policy and the legal requirements for meeting minutes. That's what the contract is. It's not detailed transcript verbatim meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, that's a more question. Is there any copies in the agenda?
No, I don't think so, but I will make sure from now on we have copies.
We have a best audience, so appreciate your opinion.
Yeah. So I, I think we're, we'll make sure that there's copies of the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a copy that could be put up on the board? Yeah, you'll need all three of them.
Okay, next on the. I need a, I need a motion and a second.
Yeah, the other motion and the second.
Okay, okay, Tom, I'm sorry.
Tom Crossley, resident.
I just turned back a little now. Manager. Thank you. Okay, Tom Crossley, resident. I've been here sixteen years. And over that period of time, we probably averaged minutes, maybe thirty pages of minutes per meeting. And it's been years by the pedal to keep track of what's going on on the board. It's been very easy to track down what was said about the board in those minutes by simply doing a word search, by what you can get off the website. For the new contractor that's coming in to do this, have they been appraised of any of the procedures that have taken place and how it's done over the last fifteen years? Or they simply thought what someone's idea was is how it should have been done over the last fifteen years?
Well, they're, they're going by, they, they service approximately a hundred CDVs in Florida.
I'm talking about someone. This board we're used to getting for the last fifteen years evidently is not going to have any influence on going forward. We're just going to throw all that history away.
Yes, sir, as I mentioned, I'm going by what the board policy is and the legal requirement.
This, the board policy also includes how input was brought on this board where its procedure comes up. That's not appeared in the minutes of the board.
Yes, sir, the, the vote should, should be in there and the motions and who made the motion.
Should be, but I don't think they are.
Yes, sir.
I just think it would be very good idea to, to rank the figures of that, that, that contract, aware of how it's been done in the past. Because you've been more information put on the website and more information distributed among the residents and the voters in the district over the last fifteen years than we've been getting for the past year. Then very, very abbreviated. The minutes just say that a discussion took place, and it was probably common. It doesn't give names, it doesn't say what anybody said, and it doesn't say how individual board members voted. There's one or two that voted no, the others voted yes. It's not, it's not identified, to my knowledge, from what I've looked at. Thank you.
In the current minutes, they were all four of us who agreed to call anybody out. In the past, obviously, there's a no vote. Who voted in the minority?
I'm sorry, if I go back, I'll see that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, ten minutes, so who voted against? I don't think this has a vote, but.
They're all far off.
Right, we want it here for the public as well as for the board members. I understand you guys can look at, you can remember what was said, that there's four thousand homes out there. And, and people in the past, there's a lot of old people that don't come to these meetings. And it was always used just to make, this is, this is government in the sunshine. Ford's probably got the most primitive awesome country in terms of government in the sunshine. But we have to take, this visit has gone through the drought over the last couple of years with regard to the information that's put on, out to the vote about what takes place at these meetings.
Thank you. Who's next?
Morning Supervisor George Kaufmanberger, resident. I'll ask Mike Gilpin, President Gilpin, to give me a couple of minutes. Under Steve General.
Mike, can I interrupt you? This is, this is both a comment on the consent agenda. We're not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not.
Okay, so I want to talk about the minutes.
Yes.
And also talk.
Just talk about the minutes.
Talk of the general manager. I'm in my twenty-eighth year here coming June. I've seen twenty-eight boards, I've seen eight general managers. My early evaluation of Chris is he's the man, because I've been in the last ten or fifteen years. My advice to Chris is, don't fight off too much of the threat right away, and I think that's what's happening here. You're a gentleman public who's been here in the district for forty-seven years. I don't know about the minutes, I'm saying for twenty-eight years, we've been able to go online and read the minutes. Unverbatim, but specific comments that people are interested in, that's why they come here, to debate or talk about it. So the new format, I don't like a little. And I told you to your face, I'm going to support you a hundred percent. I think you're, I think we're extremely fortunate to have a manager caliber here. Of the four general managers I've seen who had previous experience in managing cities, et cetera, I think you're probably one of the top two. The issue here is the board is going to have to get on board. If they try to resist you, you're not going to be a success. So they have to get in tune of what you're trying to do. You've got to hear approved to do, and the public, you're the man to do it. And I personally think you are. But you're going to have to be somewhat flexible. Tom Crossley said, who's moving very slowly in a different direction, I do want to say for this, not all at one time. One of my major complaints is, I don't like the minutes. Similar to Supervisor Brooks, Supervisor Perry, the general public, they want to read what goes on, not something a little box. And I know my good friend Supervisor Hotel, he has a different opinion. Well, that's his right. We've talked a lot, and all of them are not pleasant conversations, but we're still friends. So I suggest, like, one of the prime issues I have right now, and I think President Gilpin experienced the same thing, on aisle three-eight-two, two-one-nine-seven, it rings till it goes to voicemail. And the message I get, the mailbox is full, pfft. You have no idea, I mean, that aggravates me as an old man. So when I come to see you, we walk out to the front office, there are several ladies sitting there. I don't know what they're doing, but they're certainly not answering the phone. And that's one of your responsibilities. So when people call that number, they want somebody on the other end, even if it's you. I don't think it'll waste your time doing that. But I don't like the minutes either, and I think you're trying to change the direction much too quickly. People resist change, you know that. They already are good, the board resists change, believe me. I'm a prime example, but.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comment on the consent agenda?
The only reason I'm going to bring this up is because what's discussed, the discussion was presented again and Supervisor Perry said it's not talking, but it's that. Related to the medical leave situation, I thought I'd bring it up.
Not yet.
It's not yet?
We're waiting.
You're not, you're going to discuss it at this meeting?
I think we discuss it with the true people.
With what?
With the true people who are up there, with the out people who are up there.
And I'll be able to comment at that time. I just wanted to go on record, because I don't think there's company enough time to review this. I think I was, I was promised a reply from Andy on this situation, and I never got, never got it. So I'd like to make sure I have a chance to talk to him.
Thanks, you're welcome. Thank you. Any other comment on the consent agenda? Okay. Any other comment by the board?
I'd like to hold off on the vote until we see the corrected copy. Or the corrected, whatever. That would be by recognition. Since we agree it's not right, let's correct it in the votes.
I don't agree it's not right. I agree with the husband, but we will lie for the vote.
The vote?
Okay, there we go. Supervisor, have you called?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor here?
No.
Supervisor Phillips? I am not going to move because I was not here last week.
You have to vote, you have to vote.
No.
You cannot.
No. Finally, no one? Yes. Okay, we will redo, okay?
I had that sentence, make sure that clarification's in there.
Okay. Okay, next thing on the agenda is Scott here, our competition.
Good morning, board. Scott Kerwak, House Judiciary District's free. Happy New Year, all of us. Basically, we're forcing last time I was here, and then we talked about recycling. And we finally were able to get through to the powers that be at the Armory, and that is a no-go. Not available to the recycling center at the Armory, and we have hoped to do that. Staff is working with the city of Avon Park, trying to secure another location. Lake Classic location is secured, construction has started on it, now we have Lake Classic. Coming meeting at two o'clock today with the city of Sebring and the mayor. The location there that we're talking about is by the Y M C A Max long sporting complex. We have a proposed location for the recycling drop-off location for the Sebring spot. So we are still working on a location within Avon Park. I know you folks have chosen desire possibly to have a location here. And certainly, we welcome that conversation if that's something we would want to pursue further. And we could have staff get with, you know, what we're looking for, towards the size of the piece of property and the amount of space it would take up. And once these locations are started, they will be open three days a week, five hours a day. And so that stuff will be put down on all of our social media platforms and all our chemical studies.
I have a question for that. So there's no cost for us to do that, correct?
No, your part would be the property on, on providing a location for that.
Then obviously, if it doesn't work, we could agree to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so this will be a test, yeah, I mean, this will be a test to see how much people are actually visualizing the drop-off structure period code. And once we give you the direction on it, yes, how many people will be talking?
Really short amount of time, it has to do with whether the ground, the base of the ground, whether it's already a pavement or whether we have to break shell rock or something, and people should have a drive-through and come in and come out. There's going to have to be enough room for stage four containers in there, with enough room to get a roll-off truck, remove full ones and drop off empty ones. And it will be, it will be fenced, we would provide the fencing. And also, around the perimeter of the locations, so the drop-off will not be allowed unless the facility is open. The county pays for all that expense. The reason that we're wanting the municipalities to be involved, Avon Park, Sebring, Lake Classic, is because when we were doing per side recycling, of course, that was only being done on people in the unincorporated areas that were getting serviced with the county on the garbage pickup. With this program, it will be open to all citizens of the county, whether they live within us, within a town or municipality or not. So they're part of helping this program to be providing locations to the county. And we would fund all the costs of building a location and managing a location. But we want the municipalities to have some skin in the game also, because they're residents, because the cities do not, Avon Park, Sebring, Lake Classic do not have recycling program. So this would open up a recycling program for them also. And their contribution to that would be the locations, or what our hope was. We're not having a lot of progress with Avon Park, and we're still working on that. So that's where you folks may come into play, that we could maybe, you know, find someplace out here. But understanding also that if it is located on a piece of property that you folks own, that it's open to everybody in the county, not just the residents that's not there.
And it was going to be open three days a week?
Three days a week, five hours per day. Yes, that will be the initial phase, and then of course, if there's, if we see a need to be open more, we're just going to have to see how many people and what kind of load that we would have, and sort of people coming drop off recycling. But I don't think, have any other questions for me? I have other residents that have asked some questions about the American Rescue Plan funding that the county received and the twenty-point-six million dollars that our county received, all counties from the United States to funding. And the county commission has adopted a benefit schedule for a project list on how this money would be spent over the next, now, three and a half years, that the funding has to be spent. The county contracted with a consulting firm because of the regulations on how this money has to be. About a hundred and fifty pages worth of regulations, department heads, and municipalities, whatever came to us and with different project ideas, the consulting firm rated those, this project on a scale of one to five. A one was a direct fit, that it fit the criteria for the funding. A five was, it's a stretch, there's a good chance it would not pass an audit, the county would have to pay the money back. Staff worked with department heads and came back to the county commission of the list of projects that were rated either number one or number two. Those projects have been initially approved, the money has been earmarked for those projects. In no way does that mean that these projects may shift to other, other things. It would also meet the criteria, it's just they started where we were tasked with designated funding on how it would be utilized, and that's what the county did. So, so there's a lot of federal guidelines, I know with you folks here. So there's a lot of federal guidelines. I know with you folks here, being an improvement district, you know, certainly we'd have desire to be involved in some of that. I wonder if your residents have a question about Spring Lake? And we designated some money for their broadband expansion out there because they have very limited internet access, part of the American Rescue Plan. Part of that is to have people have internet access for during times of emergency to get information out and things like that. So they qualify for some broadband expansion out there, and they're also matching with the fundings that the head teams do grant also. So if there's a bigger project or something that this board wants our staff to look at, I certainly would be glad for staff in touch with somebody at the board's direction and see if that would be it.
Just sort of have this right. If I'm reading this right, Spring Lake, you're giving them one point two five million?
Correct.
Is that there?
Yes, sir.
And the Southern Bay Sebring, you're giving them fifty fifty, well, up to one million dollars.
Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
You're giving them up to one million dollars, fifty fifty.
The city of Sebring, you said?
Yeah, this, the engineering facility. So you give between those two, they're giving over two million dollars.
That's correct.
And we're operating over four hundred thousand.
What was the last word?
And we're operating over road construction of four hundred thousand.
The reason is, right?
I just want to make clear.
Right, and this is. In road construction, unfortunately, it's not fit the criteria of how the money is spent. And we have to, we can't spend this money if it's not going to pass an audit, because the county would have to pay it back. And I would be glad if you folks would like to have a hall meeting or anything to get staff here to explain the American Rescue Plan. I would be more than happy to make that happen. I know it's a lot of money. Why are we not getting some? Why are some people getting some? It's a very complicated process on how the money can be used, and whether it will qualify for funding or not.
Did county staff reach out in some way to find out if there was any projects that we would like to pivot?
I'm not aware of that. I can chat. I mean, I'm pretty, Chris, I'm not aware of that.
I'm not. Did the county reach out to the municipality of Avon Park, Sebring, Lake Classic, and Spring Lake?
I know that they have conversations and monthly meetings with the county city manager, Al Mattcher, on a regular basis.
But in some way, is not involved?
Chris, are you involved?
Yes, sir. The question we have, the question is, how did Spring Lake communicate with us now? Have they started it, or did staff contact them?
I will find out. I don't know how it happened.
I guess the question is, on the rescue plan, the infrastructure, if we have some of our sewer systems need an upgrade, we'd ask it into the plan? Is that something you might be able to help with?
Well, I know that part of the sewer system expansion was on George Boulevard, the same sewer for Emergency Operations Center, which has served, what, served by Sebring right now? And because of overcrowding and problems that we had during COVID shutdowns and what have you, there are stuff that's still not coming up. So that qualified for that funding for emergency services, yeah, kind of it. So regular sewer expansion for communities and what have you, do not qualify.
Yeah, that's very much. Yeah. This is forty nine years old.
And my understanding is that that is not qualified. The town of Lake Classic now, I know the town of Lake Classic applied individually without the county. They applied and they received a forty million dollar grant to expand their sewer system, to improve their sewer system and to expand outline areas that are close to bodies of water, part of the groundwater act. But that was all the town of Lake Classic. They applied for that. The county got nothing. No, I'm saying that was a federal grant that they applied for.
I'm sorry, not maybe degradation and natural shocks or the Florida's greater. And you could be completely relaxed about that. That would not bother you.
I would be glad, of course, I would be glad that if Chris or somebody has it for board, gives the direction or what have you, and has the things that he's questioning whether or not it would qualify for any of this funding, then let me align those people so they can get answers back.
I would recommend that Chris have a meeting with the county on both that and the need of what the county needs are for space for recycling. So we can at least get the facts and determine whether or not the community is.
Recycling is up next where we want to go.
Well, we have to, we have to know what their needs are so we can figure out if we have a place.
And I think, and that's easy enough to make happen, to have somebody give with Chris, the size of the piece of the property, and all what would be needed from your end and how to do it.
Well, I would take his recommendation and go one step further. If it sounds like there's a need for us to talk to you guys, and you guys have talked to us, more than just when an emergency pops up, or a scenario pops up that you have a conversation on. Sounds to me like you guys should read the schedule once a month with the county, and might think that's a thing that you guys.
I think it's a great idea.
And talk to each other so they don't keep balls behind their own, and then try to get ahead of it.
Absolutely. I'd be glad. I'd be with Chris and.
Thank you.
I did put a handle on your desk. It's really in response to Mr. Albert and some of the information you sent over and questions about the federal funding. And it basically shows some of the requirements on that, where the money goes, and a couple other grant opportunities. And two of those, we're working on right now, facilities plan for wastewater treatment plant upgrades and seven to ten million dollars bond through S R F. That facilities plan is underway. And I'll bring you the facilities plan for the stormwater section that they started with the board last June. That's about a five million dollar request business grant. It's a loan, but right now the interest rate is one percent. I also put information in there on the cooperative funding program with the South Water Water Management District, and on water efficiency and conservation initiatives. They'll fund a fifty fifty. And we could probably get a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, say, computerized irrigation controllers, low water use fixtures, things like that. And that grant program kicks off at the applications in June. That information's also in that packet. We'll chase that. And I also spoke with the people at the county who have the quarterly meetings for the mitigation funds through FEMA. And that first meeting is the nineteenth of this month at the Ag Center, and I'll be attending that. It's quarterly. I think the simple way to say, why doesn't Sun and Light, yes, some of these funds have been involved, is we haven't had a seat at the table. No one from Sun and Light has attended those quarterly meetings, so when they go allocate that money at the end of the year, look around the table, and there's no one from Sun and Light saying, we have a share. So we're taking those four initiatives, wastewater, stormwater, emergency management, and also grants to the water management district the last few months. And as you know, Arrow's been working on a per death grant for the rec. So there's five initiatives.
That's what we're doing. The only problem is finding this like this is conscious nobody. Everything is well over my head. We need to sit down and discuss it, because it's something meaningful for this staff. That's why we're here.
Yeah, I think, like Chris, we're trying to make some brief one. He's hovering to have a seat at the table, but this initiative hasn't been done yet.
Can I have permission to talk about this inside?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It sounds to me like it's too late for any of this money, because according to the newspaper, I was going to be shocked and confirm that. It's a long list. The projects have already been approved. So it looks to me like we missed out on this completely. I would think that our county commission representative would have been more proactive in advising us if this money is maybe available for us. I mean, to say that, because we didn't, didn't, and I thought we had a representative that went to these meetings, I don't know. If we had somebody here who was supposed to be looking after this kind of stuff, and it didn't happen, then that person probably shouldn't be on payroll anymore. Maybe they're not on payroll now. But it looks to me like it's too late. And let me ask you a question. Can you supply us with the list? The list has already been generated. Can you send us a copy of this list? I'd like to see it. I would imagine that everybody here on this board would like to see it. This is free money. I mean, we're ten percent of the population of this county, and to be left out is ridiculous. We got names here too, despite everybody else. We're getting ready to borrow the money, but have to pay it back. Come on. What's going on with the county and Sun and Light? Why are we giving?
I'll call that.
Blind side of the town.
I'll be glad.
My God. That's terrible.
I'll be glad. Like I stated, the money has been earmarked. Any of these projects, as they come, their provision will have to be approved by the county commission individually. That's the money that's been earmarked. We've already discussed it. This money, if we move it around, this money to other projects that weren't identified, some projects are going to come in under budget, that we've already discovered. We have to, we have to place money in boxes on where they qualify and how well they qualify for the funding. So to answer your question, Sun and Light says no. You're not left out. This is not a done deal. Every single dollar that this, that this has been spent, each individual project will have to be approved as it comes to provision by the county commission. So now it's not too late. So I can certainly be glad to, like Chris, or whatever the direction from your board, I work at the pleasure of this board. If you have a struggle for me to do, I would be glad to, whatever representative from the board, or your manager, what have you, to certainly get involved in these conversations. And make sure that we look forward to it. If Chris has a monthly meeting with our county administrator, to keep up all these things, or he can also report as your general manager to you folks, I would be happy to do that.
I think for sure we want one for you. What's that, sir?
You're saying we want one for you? We want to make sure, Chris.
Absolutely.
I do have one other question, but I was going to dive in and ask this question. What is that, what's going on with Sun and Light Boulevard with the yellow? Has there been construction work on Sun and Light Boulevard that's been going on a lot for the last couple of months?
Yes, one.
Oh, is that the last one that put it?
Yeah, that's something. I'm totally, I haven't fixed it up.
It's all property. I mean, is anybody going to tour it? Somebody has to be.
Oh, we've been out there talking to the contractors on numerous occasions, because they hit some of our irrigation lines.
I'd say that, what are they doing?
Just installing a gas line.
And you have an additional one, a replacement one?
Let's see, I think it's brand new. Going right down the middle of the boulevard.
Yeah, it's not work at the county. It's a private, private, private utility.
Well, that's not a county thing.
That's not, that's not the county. We don't have utilities. County is not a utility.
No, it's a private contractor doing it.
Who hired?
Tico. Tico Gas.
The county hired?
No, we're, we're.
Tico Gas.
Yeah, the only way the county would get involved would be maybe issue a right-of-way use permit for Sun and Light Boulevard, because it's a county right-of-way.
Okay, somebody has to know this.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Bill O'Grusson. I'm a resident of Pretty Tain, yes. Okay, I appreciate Scott Kerwack for replying to emails and about requests for gas tax money, which we get, or P P P money, which we, I know it's a hell of a question. And I think the whole root problem everybody has to understand, and the seven thousand people are almost seven thousand people now, and because the district is going to expand, is that we qualify for it. The problem is, from what I understand, this district is an improvement district. Improvement districts, I guess the feeling is that you don't need the money. You don't have projects that you have to do. But we do. And I think we're being changed change all the time because we are classified as a district that's non-qualification. We're not qualified. And I go, I can't understand that. We're all taxpayers here. I pay seven hundred dollars a year for taxes here, but twenty-three hundred dollars to the county. If it was reversed, we wouldn't have to have look for any money. But you know, the root kind of bugs me that the citizens here that pay state federal taxes cannot get any relief or stimulus that's going to other cities and towns within the state. So I hope things can change. I hope we can qualify for some of this money. Because some of these projects run into billions of dollars. And, you know, for a small community, that's a lot of money. Thank you.
Okay. Whether or not we're going to now go to public comments. I want to remind everybody that you can have a public comment, but on every item, there will be a public comment after that, too.
This public comment is.
But this is public now. Now.
This is for what's not on the agenda? Was this correct?
Yes.
Our continuation of what was just discussed?
You can talk about anything you want right now. But a public comment. Took us a while to get there.
You brought your brother in.
Why are you talking about vehicles?
Oh, Tom, that's a rare one. Morning, George. Thought I'd murder Rosin again. I will have comments on each individual item, if I'm still awake when they come up with it. My thrust right now is, in general, as a board supervisor, as I said, Frank, I have been doing twenty-eight year residency, twenty-eight boards, and I've been an eight general managers. I have, I think, the experience to make a qualified judgment on this, not this, but the last two or three boards. I think the board members individually should go through and read the policies and procedures maybe two or three times a week if they've been almost spoken for a pain. That's the direction that give you folks your, your direction on how to manage. Several things are going on now that are in direct conflict with some of those issues, and I'm going to make it up to you. I think when recent board, and I'll say the board the past ten years, have taken a direction that is contrary to the overall health and comfort of the district. There's entirely too much money spent on golf and restaurants. I can name six million dollars in the past seven years. That doesn't benefit eighty-two percent of the people here. It benefits about eight percent. That's good because it is an amenity. It's a very expensive amenity. But you can bankrupt the district by using the enterprise funds. For example, the wastewater money should be for the upgrade and renewal of our wastewater and our sewer plant. It's in terrible condition. We're way behind the eight ball in D E P regulations. Get the new system in place. Can you imagine what would happen? We have a major sewer for water break. Some of the pipe have been the ground forty-seven years. They're under driveways or under pathways. We don't have the money to fix it. Despite what general manager Chris says. I don't like the term borrow. When you borrow, you have to pay it back. If we had good financial management the past, well, since two thousand and five, when we had over twelve million dollars in the bank, and now a debt to our name, now we're straight from the bottom of the barrel in every account. And the catch terms, we can borrow about half percent. Well, why don't we get a piece of the action, like, like the passage, forty million dollars brandy? I mean, we're the largest lake pass of the population out of no relation.
Four point five.
Hmm?
I think it was four point five.
Whatever.
Forty million.
Huh?
Forty million.
Forty million. Wow. And we can't, we can't borrow. In reply to your motor cost request, I think what the board ought to do, they ought to authorize the general manager to undertake a study on the direction, and maybe we need to incorporate, we looked at that about fifteen years ago, and we didn't have sufficient funds to balance this up, this much money. That's how you're going to get, federal, state, local funds. You're not going to give us a special improvement district. Now, if you don't want to go to that direction, then you have to have the backbone to step up to the plate and start having the golf and restaurant operations pay for themselves their debt dreams on their district. I've been to the twenty-eight years I've been here. I've got a request in right now. We've got the last ten years of money spent of a district on both items that's going to knock your socks off. I sit on that same board you folks sit on. I think, David Adler was probably, I think Supervisor Phillips was here. When we assessed the golf membership, three hundred and twelve dollars a year, I think, more of a problem. To pay for turtle one golf course. It left, we paid for the front side in ten years, three hundred and twelve dollar assessment added in addition to the dues. Yeah, we had pushback, but the board voted five to zero to do it because at the time they thought was required immediately. In hindsight, it's terrible mistake. We don't need thirty to total. We need eighteen, which we think is very self-sufficient. That's our best system. The second bind, we paid off the front nine hurdle. Two years later, we're going to lose our permits to do the fourth nine, because all they did is on, wet mud, and four engineers sent us a letter, said you have two years to start. We'll never renew your permits again. The board had another meeting, standing room only at night. We had, I think, about thirty-five memberships were on these, some going to other areas. Board voted five to zero, depending if it's three hundred and twelve dollars a year. And as I say, the first two members in this room helped pay for that property. I was one of them. They paid that until two thousand and three, when NRPI came in and saved the district and put back. They paid off everything built rehab, that built clubhouse kitchens, which was designed by a company out of Orlando who had designed kitchens and clubhouses all over Florida, Alabama, and Georgia. What happens eight, ten years later? Not good enough. We've got to drop one point four million for state of yard pick. That puts up the same kind of thing today at this point. It's the direction, the board needs to change direction. Golf is an important entity, but keep in mind, it's a dead horse. I'm not advocating getting rid of golf at all. I'm advocating usually that our financial housing over, but we're not going to survive it. That's not simple. And if you don't have, where are the other the backbone? Off your coffin, because I did twenty-five years. They get in their case about raising fees. So well, we can easily shut one down, but I'm not going to argue. I'm here to play golf. You want to argue, go to the board meetings. How many people do you see with your golf? Not many, unless you talk about raising rates and then settle. I'm just saying, hopefully in twenty twenty-three, you walk through the doors, you'll be proudly steps in, but hasn't been there the past ten years in pursuit of the air I want. There's a policy. Says, it's in the golf, the golf policy, that when there's insufficient funds in district funds to pay for an item, you must even assess the golf number. It's a policy. Have you read any of your medical? There's a policy. It's not a controversial issue. You can do that. But the capacity approved of the golf, are the appropriate actions to limit our golf. How many dollars were built to spend, two point two million dollars on spectrum for their run? That would run you right out of there if you were asking. So why should the district have to fund them? There's no way. There are ways you could do it. I mean, you have these massive projects. Somebody's got to help pick up the load. Eighty-two percent of the people who live here, they'll do a fish, they'll let that golf course. Doesn't bring people here, that's no why it's a offering people here. Uh-uh. It's believed to have more than three hundred and sixty-five members, at least four or five hundred. Never been there, never owned it. All I'm saying, when you read the events, when you're sitting there at your homes at night, coughing the crisp before you come to meetings, put your district out, you represent everyone in the district, every one of you. You don't know anybody with a golf, month, I mean, that's okay. That's not unusual. Our behalf is, aren't we? Eighty-five percent. But you folks represent. They're entitled much as a district might as the golf operator, restaurant operator. I was dead against increasing the size of the restaurant. Some of the board members were against it before they were formed. It passed. There was one point three shot up to the business. Everybody in large, the clubhouse, the handling, the overfunked grounds. Wow. Financially, terrible decision. I'm actually pretty concerned right now, when you make the decision. It's like a sprinkler system, and in my opinion, we can afford a new high-tech meter system. I don't care what. Building reviews are going to be, we've been through already, both of them are decisive. We're going to assure them people in the wastewater area, we have four people that we need a minimum of eight. We hire people, we train them, we license them, then we have to bag them for a one part. Spring blade, doesn't get paid more money. Or you're going to have to deal with that, or it's what it's saying. What has happened over the years? Probably unintentional, but if that's happening. We have created within this district, a special class of people. It's going to go, they can spend on public, that's public company. I played golf, I paid dues. My dues are offset at least eighty percent of the cost of the district. You've got to look at, run you right out of there, but you don't have a knife going to do that. That's what we're doing. And our cost per round average is nineteen dollars. Never gone with, the average cost across America from yesterday is thirty-six dollars per man. Or, forty-four dollars. We're not even close. That's a rate that keep on price as well. Every hour, man, be free. That's getting a special benefit for a special group. I've preached about that for five years. I'm not saying that's that, what's learned and winning? That's a special privilege. Everybody else, they complain, why, why did I pay for this many food blocks this year? Only remember, those three hundred and sixty-five people are, well, seven hundred, oh, one can dine on the food. This board's done a good job, but hadn't amended, not congratulated. This is not a golf district. This is a recreation. Golf, some of the golf areas are golf, uh, I said, sticky golf is hot in the room. Spring blade, which is completely shut down, other, other commitment, incredibly new area, and it's going to be stiff. They have one of their golf courses in fifteen years that these members didn't suffer at all. I'm not advocating that. I'm just simply saying, you people need, as the district passes on, this twenty twenty-two, starting the district, start this year offering, may be controversial, but good for the district. I consider people in here to bring. I talk to all of you. I hope we're friends advocates, but you thought, think, you represent four thousand people. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, the action agenda. Number A is the AMI meter presentation, purchase and implementation. My next.
Yes, sir. And last evening, we had two of the members make presentations aboard, not into the discussion. We, and a third vendor made the presentation about fifteen minutes and give an overview of their product, how they implement it. We also have Andy Honeycat and Honey Craft from here from Neerisys. And they are consulting some of the specifications on this project. And they're here, they're going to provide an overview and some perspective on the project from their viewpoint, and also available answering questions. So I'll have Sean first come up and make the presentation on the meters and ask him to follow up.
I did do, I did propose some presentations for right now. I didn't do that for the last second. First off, good morning, guys. I'm in Sean Seaver. I'm going to identify pipe and supply. We are the source distributor, stocking supplier, or master. So we're here today to, you can, actually, we can keep that on, you can start that. So the district put out a bid, of course, to bid on for a water solution system. I think we're attentive that that system currently, just as, is not meeting the spec, and it's, it's there. As I sat here today, this is, okay, sorry. As I sat here today, I was kind of unsure of how to present this to you guys, whether I sit here and talk about my meter, dive into the specs, show you graphs, how it all interacts with the computer system, the antenna, and with the individuals here that have come up, I felt that there needs to be a different approach to this. This is a very large investment. This is something that will cost over a million dollars, probably, for you guys. And when you hear that number, you're, that can draw a lot of red flags, a lot of caution. And that brings me to my next point is, I see that the factor of trust, trust in something that you guys invested in, how long it's going to last, can you guarantee things with it? And those are the two quick things that I'll go over with, and then I will throw the meter system in, and we'll talk things over and answer anything that might, that I might have missed. But currently, this is the City of Seaver. The City of Seaver is one of our loyal customers and has been for over ten years. They have had our system, I believe, for about twelve years now. They are about going to a loyalty exchange, basically just upgraded, going from the model that they have now to the system that we're looking at now. Spring look improvement district, they're doing the exact same thing. So two local utilities that are using our solution. I like to use the word solution because you're using a product that provides a revenue stream, and from the sound of it today, that's, that's pretty big right now for you guys. And to have this revenue stream that you can rely on for the length of the warranty, twenty years, pretty incredible, something that you can then find for other things, your golf course, the other amenities, et cetera. But we look at this at the meter as a cash register. How can we provide you with a cash register that you can get the most non-revenue? How can you analyze that money? How did it come in? How can you maximize it? How can you greater it? How can you make it more? And with the combination of our product and the combination of the customer service we have, I believe you will maximize that, you will capture that non-revenue one that is out there. To put this into a quick mathematical equation, there's a low flow, the lowest flow of gallons per minute of metering. Residentially, our meter has a low flow of point zero three gallons per minute. My competition is at point one, point zero seven gallons per minute difference. So if that was, if that meter was going at point oh three for an hour, that would accumulate to four point two gallons. You guys have over thirty-four hundred services, thirty-four hundred times four point two, let's just say all of them are going for just an hour, that's over fourteen thousand gallons right there that my system will register than my competition. Just a little example for you to see where, yes, we meet the spec, but where do we go beyond to capitalize on, on non-revenue that we can guarantee to you guys? Quickly, I'll show you two designs, patented designs of our meters. This is our mechanical meter. Now, you guys were stating you would like the ultrasonic, that's a type of measurement. It uses transit time to measure water, that is this guy right here. And I'm going to, I'm going to hold the cable because what we propose to you guys is a wireless unit. The reason why the cable's on here is because they're looking at other systems. But with our wireless unit, you are now taking away any of the extra concerns, the, 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 getting a cup water, having an antenna that goes to the meter box. I'm sure you guys go outside your guys' homes and you see that meter box out there, and sometimes you may see a, a, an equipment come on, you have to look in there and agree with it or whatnot. But we're trying to eliminate all that. And with our design, we hope that, well, you can kind of see that you can rely on the product that sits in there in the box and it does what you need. Here, as you can see, there of course is no water coming from. Our radio is both different. That radio sends a signal to the antenna at the base station. At a click of a button, our base station can pick up forty thousand meters in fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes it takes to read your entire system. I'm not sure how long it takes to manually read your system. I would already know it's not fifteen minutes. You can use that time for whatever else you need. If there's a leak out there, if there's other public work needs, water department, sewer department, you name it. With our software program, you can analyze all the data, the leaks, the pressure losses, backflow alarms, tampering alarms, all of that with a click of a button. This is the amount that you have. We knew this back, we exceed certain areas, and we know that this is, like I said, an investment by you guys. We, we don't look at it as just a sale. Once you give us this, then we are there for the entirety of it, and even their after. You may have some of our meters there after, and we're there for you guys. And I thank you guys for your time today. I'll send this over to Neerisys or David here or Master here in case he wants to say something.
Thank you. I'm David Rich with Master here. I'm living for my. This system that we're talking about, I just wanted to let you know, the water meter is a very important part. Everyone's concerned in here, the unaccountable water loss, which our product helps pick a lot of that up. It's what Sean tried to say. And as far as I heard and concerned, some of you brought up that this failed, that failed, this didn't work, Master Meter, you can call field utility instead of Florida. That's our strongest suit, is that we, we've got a service guy, we have a support, software system support. We have everything that's been needed for water system for over twenty years in this state. When you buy it, it's an ongoing product, it has to be supported. When you buy it, it's an ongoing process, there has to be support, master meters, support, software, field technicians, the camera, troubleshooting. We make sure that, yes, there's always going to be a problem with the something in the later world and product. The master meter's prime concern is that, it's not a problem if we fix it. We're good at that. You can get a utility out there and we can buy into that. I just wanted to throw that in because that was one of our latest selling points of our service after the fact. It's what makes it unbreakable officially. And you get your money for it. Thank you.
I have a quick question and one of the things that we raised. We gave a 20-year warranty, Seabrook had your units for 12 years and we're on loyalty upgrade right now. Is there an incentive for that one after?
Yes, there was. And they chose to do that because they wanted to go to a newer product, newer system that they were using the more mechanical style where they, you know, generally have to pick up a reading. The products that they're purchasing now has that access for them to go AMI in the future without changing the meter. So they're upgrading to that so they can filter AMI, which is direct from your office, that type of reading. Our product, also, you have to know a product, if you buy the AMI from Master Meter and that AMI system goes down, a tower, a stall, it automatically goes back to a drive-by system on that.
And with the loyalty that they're doing, they are swapping out the register, just the register, because the meter body has plenty of life there. With newer meter bodies, or let's just say you guys have a half a year meters that are in the ground and they're within five years of age and they're the bayonet style tops, we can retrofit our register onto the newer HERSI meter body. Some of those kind of things.
Any meter body that's a bayonet style top. But isn't the meter body that determines how much water falls?
Yes, sir.
We don't have their meter body, we wouldn't have that.
You're correct. And the utilities choose to save the money on the old meter and the upgrade with the new meter body, which like Sean just said, virtually five years, that meter in the ground's going to hold an accuracy rating of 90%, 95% unless it's been under a hostile situation, bad water or whatever. There's still percentage loss. Yes, you will capture more water if you do check the body, also which helps. And that, in my opinion, a lot quicker than utilizing older meters. Unless you get a large meter, any meter that's like three inches, four inches, you can actually recalibrate those meters and then put up just the radio on that meter or a certain period of time. If this recalibration is working well, then the large meter hasn't been changed.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, let's pretend I know nothing, because you're probably very accurate on this page. Your question, the meter, this project is about $1,250, is that what you're saying?
Yes, is that the, is that our submit on that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. And then there's like $400,000 of other things that have to be covered for to get this whole thing up and running? Is that correct?
We talked about maybe, I think it's $200,000 of the meter boxes.
Well, depending on what you think, you guys said, I've got a pay due of $1,648, is that right? That's, it says, oh, and my project plus $1,648. This page says $1,249. I'm all mixed up. We just sell water. If you're able to go together and add there's.
Yes, bleaching company that's probably in there that's going to install it, there's also.
Oh, you don't have anything? So we're just buying the equipment?
We're not. We are supplying the product, the meters and the software infrastructure as well as installing. We're partnering up with Vanguard. We submitted our submit with Vanguard.
Is that why you're here?
Yes, sir.
You're providing for, you buy everything for us.
You install it there, every piece of software. And then even thereafter of the sale and installation, you have me personally, my boss, him, Richard back there, a field technician, you have all of us as your reps.
So since you know a lot about this, what else, is there anything besides $1,250 that we need to spend on? Or we did?
So we are providing the meter boxes, the meters, installing them, the software, anything thereafter. I don't know if maybe sidewalks that may need to be, some scenarios like that, I would have to let the panel.
Let me ask you this way, based on what you think you're giving us, is the system up and running till we're happy?
Is my system or is the?
Well, you're already to your system.
Yes, sir.
And doing this $1,250. We have new meters in the market?
Yes, sir.
We don't need anything else?
No.
In your opinion?
No.
Okay.
I saw a question.
Go ahead.
Two of our other vendors that presented last board meeting, they go to say that there's a swap out, like, period. One of the vendors told us 10 years, you recommend you start swapping meters out, get up in your place, you're going to get 20 years of that meter. I'm sure that sounds very appealing. So I guess with that being said, do you have a projected swap out? And if you do, what is the warranty on accuracy for the mechanical meter you presented and also the ultrasonic?
Both meters have this same warranty. Yes, sir. We have a bumper to bumper, 10-year full warranty replacement on any day, any meter. That's the radio, the battery, et cetera, anything. Accuracy goes out, per, that's the accuracy warranty, still out. There's another 10-year warranty for per way, totally different per way to set. And I can supply you with that chart on the 10 years. What are we seeing on those utilities on the change out program? Depending on the type of work that we have, the usage of the system itself depends greatly on. I've seen the inverter 10 years to 15 years in between. In example, Pinnell used to have pretty great work in their systems. And a product they were using, they taped out meters every seven years. But they thought the provaler change out and other things were all better. They had a little product, they're actually using that product. They thought the provaler change out program. And as long as that radio is still open, when it turns up meter, you don't have to change out radio. The meter body under it percent.
Can you calculate the probability of that phase on gauge or part?
Yes, it's based on both. You're correct. There was a national average on usage at those times. And also the gauge required to, it's both included. Thank you for making that page.
I got a small question. When you have the transmitter inside the meter body, which I think is very cool, what happens when you're in the swamp? Same thing as being Seabrook in Sunland Lake, so how does that work? Are there meters, there are conditions where you might say, you know, I think the guy should have an antenna on this one?
Exactly. I've got two scenarios. One, we have the mechanical meter here at the City of Bradenton. I believe they've got about 2,000 right now. And their conditions are the concrete plastered meter boxes with the cast iron lid. And the meter boxes are 24/7 filled up with anywhere up to, I would say up to about five inches of water, up to. Mostly they're about an inch of water that these are submerged under. They are able to drive by and they have picked up every single one of them. They have implemented that about two, almost two years ago. If we see, like in a prop study, or if you do have a meter out there and you're just not able to pick it up, we have an IP68 rated, which means it can be fully submerged underwater. Not, of course, not 10 feet or anything like that, but an IP68 rated register that has a wired unit that comes off. And it would then have a mushroom antenna onto the meter lid, like the ones that you see currently in your system right now. So yes, there is that option and, yes, so. Yes, we have two options after that.
We appreciate the information and staying on schedule, only three minutes late from our 15 minutes.
I've got two documents in here. One is Empire Fight, an astrometer AMI pricing. So CAEDS, $1,249,275. I have another sheet in here that says Empire Fight, astrometer AMI pricing. Bottom of that one is $1,360,236.
What, I've got what it says, total price of cost, $1,648,000.
And if you have two prices from us, it is because we provided a submit for both the mechanical meter and then we did one for the ultrasonic, which was the one that you heavily prefer. But because we have AMI for both types of meters, we wanted to give you an option. Because the ones, the utilities around us are using the mechanical meter. So something just to reference, the 1.248, which meter? I believe that would be the, of layout. That would be this mechanical, okay? Yes. And mechanical meters are reusable, are the kind of use right now?
And we asked the vendor to provide pricing. And that's why you see there's different pricing in those areas for mechanical and ultrasonic, because they offer those products. And also the 1.648 figure that you see in the meters, it's reported, and you'll expand on that, includes a 10% contingency at $160,000. It also includes $120,000 of project management inspection fees.
We'll get to that later.
Right, so that's where the figures are different.
You've got all these documents showing way different prices, it's just hard to comprehend what we're supposed to be voting on.
Well, today's information.
Good. By right there, we're not voting.
Yeah, we're not.
I'm sorry, it's really to.
No, but when you have this much discrepancy in documents that are sitting in front of us, my comfort level is nothing. There's too many different prices, they're not, it says the price, Oregon Empire Fight, $1,200,000. Next page says $1,400,000. It just, because it's in the same presentation, that's what gets me.
I don't need to do that.
I did, I'm sorry.
Appreciate your time. Thank you guys much.
Thanks for having us.
And let me introduce Andy Honeycutt from MeterSys. One thing with our bid sheets for this project and MeterSys, we went in and asked them what that year operation cost and tried to find every, it didn't cost anything that could come up and throw it all on the table. So we didn't come back and say it's 1.258 million and then later on come in and go, by the way.
Chris, I appreciate that. But when we've got documents in front of me in the same pamphlet with two different prices for the same place, based on what I'm seeing.
And I think I can address that.
Andy, introduce yourself.
Okay. Good morning, Andy Honeycutt of the MeterSys, the basement modeling, working on the CMI, municipal consulting, a public agency consulting from here in Raleigh. We got our starting point in each quarter, but we have a system that did go very well. And we spent three years fixing. Importantly, industry wise, back when we invested in the EMI, it wasn't the first generation, but it certainly was the latest and greatest as such. The industry solved problems. And I am a former public contractor. I spent 10 years running a local government in North Carolina. And so our passion is to be independent of all manufacturers and distributors and advocate for your interests. And so the reason we're passionate about what we do is we're a problem solver. We see a need in infrastructure and we work with utilities to shape what that solution will be that serves that organization that we're 15 years alive. As it relates to the money, one of the things that we were presented with Sunland Lake was the sense of urgency. And there was a sense of urgency that if you're currently estimating the rates. And that is essentially an unheard of practice in the industry. Anyone that is estimating rates doesn't know that very well. Because the problem is you create a discrepancy between the actual consumption versus the assumed consumption at 4,000 plus. And so to say that the estimated rates is okay, in the industry, this is not. And so what staff presented to us back in July was, we've got a problem that we need to fix and we need to fix it with a sense of urgency. And so what we did was approached this of many different paths. So we looked at the legacy customer and we, or legacy provider and say, can we refer a team that gets you over the lack of performance call quickly and efficiently? And based on a number of things within that relationship, if you're incumbent provider, that was not a possibility. So the next stage we looked at and started in July was doing a sole source, identifying a solution that's going to make the most sense for the district the fastest and was execute a contract without the bid process. And that avenue was explored, but ultimately staff said, no, we need to take it to the street. We need to get bids and do so officially. So typically in these environments, the organization will have pre-funded the capital product. And so we know about what the project's going to cost. We go to the market, we get those bids, those bids come in based on a set of standards and then we award to the lowest responsible bidder. And that doesn't mean it's the lowest bidder. And in a lot of cases, including SNL and other critical districts in Florida, it was the low price for the decision. And that ultimately caused problems. And we, there are utilities around Sunland Lake that are going through the same thing. They were given a bad guidance from maybe their consulting engineer or they did it in-house. They made bad decisions about the technology and such. Five years, seven years, 10 years down the path, they give a point that this thing's just not working. The confidence level that we have, when we do this for a living and 100% of our work is in this industry, is the industry has gotten smarter. The solutions that didn't work well and were not reliable and sustainable, they kind of fall out of the wayside. And so companies like Massey and Camistrak and Sensus and that, there are about five or six companies, that we would put our credibility of our company on the line if the project is implemented further. And that's the fundamental piece. If you shoestring it, try to do it yourself, or if you kind of let the vendor drive those decisions, that's where we see this in us. There's a system interface, there's a network construct, and there's installation, has to be that correct. And all of those quality controls have to be applied at the time of installation. And then procedures within your organization to manage that through drilling and testing after the work is done. And so when we look at the numbers, the numbers were not intended to be found. The one thing I think you may have come to the conclusion is, is this is a very complex matter. There are a lot of moving parts. And as a governing body, it may not be in your interest or your need to understand the absolutes and intricacies of a law. What you need, what we wanted to do for presentation is to give you an understanding of that. And understand that the different elements that goes to make up that decision. And then empower staff in our team to work through the intricacies of the technology and bring to your recognition in that sense, trusting us to make those good decisions. And that's what we do for a living. And so again, our agency is not advocating one solution. Never take the dive from any manufacturer or distributor. We're on your side, making sure that you give us a solution in that sense. The second piece of it, so we have a sense of, financials will be by each vendor. And so we know what it's going to cost. But what we then need to do, take your buyers and your regarding, is to go and hammer out the contract. And that contract initiation will allow us to be very specific to costs. The other thing that, Master Meter's not going to be appraised, there are all the things that are ancillary costs on the utilization, program management, contingency, the system interface, the building company. These are all costs that they're not really concerned about. But we as managers have to be concerned about. be concerned about. Because when we come and say it's going to be one point eight million, it needs to be one point eight million or less, right? You don't want to hear, well, we forgot about these things and then we have to do the change work. So we have to be pretty absolute. And so we're not going to be absolute until this point because it's too early in the process. But it does give you a sense that we're in the capture of. There's a couple of things additionally I do want to mention is that you're at this almost reflection point where what do we do? And we're not, we have recommendations and we place those recommendations in presentation. Uh we believe the best way to act, if you've seen this infrastructure, it'd be credible and we believe that is. Water infrastructure is critical and so what happens when you ignore, as an organization, this infrastructure, that bill will come due eventually. And so the district has identified that from a customer service perspective, this is not a sustainable plan. And so what is the way to fix it that it works for now and investing in the values, but but in the long term? So our recommendation is, excuse me, follow rise on point eight million capital funds and then let the staff go and hammer out the details with a preferred vendor and all the ancillary costs so that you have a product you can rely on. Uh the other piece I would say is that retain earth, uh there are two elements, I know the difference is challenged with do we pay for it as we go out of our insurance or our enterprise funds or to be in for debt? I know that that debate you go on in depth. Uh my my opinion as a consultant and former public administrator is debt against a fifteen year asset is okay. Uh meters have a return on investment generally, we model this all the time about the years. So if you can take underperforming or estimated reads, under twenty meters or estimated reads and you eliminate those and get high precision reads and you automate that that read process, there is a true return on investment. It is typically different, seven, seven, nine, depending on where you place it. Meter reading is a step toward it. And so your one of your options is to do a wholesale replacement of your metering infrastructure. The second op- option is to outsource it, where you buy the equipment and outsource the implementation support that's certainly there. The third option would be to hire three or four posts at a base rate of sixty-five or seventy thousand dollars a year and hope that attrition doesn't hurt you on having to continually have to follow your approach where you're trained and executing. Um again, as a former public administrator, I believe you can automate the things you can automate so that you take your talented people, your people people, and you put them on things you can't afford. And meter reading is one of those. And so what we do, uh in AMIs, we improve our revenue position and the cash register anomaly, for example, is if you spot this system is your cash register and if you're underdone, you're leaving money on the table. It means you're giving away commodities that you're not aware of. The second piece is operational efficiencies. We get automation and we use our people doing other things that you've done. The third thing is customer service. And so imagine in an environment where you're getting twenty-four hours a week, each day, the customers can log in, they have confidence in what they're seeing, gives them usage and it takes the pressure off of high bill completion, other things it's bound to get. Uh so there are a lot of upside options for this investment and this is a fifteen year investment. Uh and we believe that by doing this and doing it well, following the plan, you're going to get us a lot of the product and we won't be here any years from now longer than while we make this decision. Uh we we stay our credibility with our company, on this industry and when these providers done right, uh give you the value. So I hope that gives you some overview of our perspective. We're passionate about solving problems and uh so we have the answer for that.
Wow. Yeah, I got a question. Uh is it a hundred and nineteen thousand or a hundred and twenty-nine? I'm just curious, because I had two different.
Break it. It was it was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand? And then your staff effectively negotiated on some dollars that were unnecessary.
Well, so now it's really a hundred and nineteen, which is why this. So what you're asking for is a hundred and nineteen thousand, deciding a contract, a hundred and nineteen thousand, rest allocated to you. I'm correcting the wrong, one point eight million dollars. You can go out and take this project and collect.
What we're suggesting, recommending is that the board offer us one point eight million for the project and still help. And then we go negotiate and continue to work and pick that solution that makes them accessible to you and then exit.
Is that is that including your thing? So it's one so one point eight for the whole for whole? And how long would it take to do all this?
Six, uh based on product availability and that that is dependent about the product impact. But we heard some product availability is only six weeks, we've heard others, I wonder what what time to be included.
Yeah, right now you're like under access.
Exactly. That's about the amount of time it takes to develop a network and then the interface and then four thousand accounts, we're all the way up in six months. We've got very few projects.
And install and run.
Install and run. And and we knew this from perspective, we've got two hundred and forty-four.
And Andy clarified, it's really we're working in conjunction with you and MeterSys is the owner's representative. So they're basically managing the project that we don't have the skills that our time could do. Um and it's really not a lot different than hiring an asphalt contractor, you know, send him out there and I put an inch down everywhere, okay, I'll check. But it really is owners representative and then we're grappling a little bit now with the funding because we had one point two five million in the budget and we're looking at one point eight million.
That's only six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Well, are you okay? But I we're in our recommendation doesn't say spend one way. It's all rising up to or not to receive one way. And we will negotiate the best price we can get. So that would be worse case than I don't expect.
And we'll look at look at options and maybe at financing part of it, delaying the project for a year, there there's some options there that the cost is going to be.
I think now we can have a conversation. Okay.
Chris, additional professional services.
Yes, sir. And that that is some housekeeping on our end originally when Dan started with MeterSys. Um they did phase one of the project, it was about twelve thousand. Little more than that and there was a phase two that they started on twelve thousand one hundred and that purchase order only included it. So all in with MeterSys to develop the bid specifications and get to the point we are now, it's a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. And I I've noted that. So if this is really just to get board for a look if it's over ten thousand dollars, you can spend that other twelve thousand one hundred to finish the phase two.
I don't want to spend a little bit or be decided until we decide ultimately. But there's some work's already done.
Pretty much this work is about done.
This is done.
And and again, on the front end, I use the analogy, if you hired Drew and Holzman to do a project, design or permitting, it's typically fifteen to twenty percent. MeterSys is about ten, program management and and the twenty-five.
To break Craig's story, turn to four, there's lots of numbers on these pages. So I think we have to re-group them for next time. And give us a proposal, how much it would cost for, and this is just my opinion, not given to everybody else, uh those gentlemen who were just up here, take the whole kit of the group. And then give us a cause and how much it would cost, but we pick out a company, which company, you know, each company. I mean, I see that you took, there was a company on the list last time, it's not on the list this time.
And we we brought three of the four in for presentation.
I can say that, but we eliminated a couple of all our draw that was being presented at the last meeting we got through.
Yes, sir. And we did that by a committee of ranking and going over this.
What committee did you have?
We had MeterSys, Joey and myself and we also had Israel from, during like improvement district, doing his experience working here and working over there. So that that committee.
That was already.
And that's standard operating procedure, you end up having seven or eight people on bring the top two, three, you know, to the board.
I understand that, I mean, the one company that's packed here and I didn't even know the name, because the folks in there would.
Master Meter?
Whatever, huh? But I said I have so much paper here, I can't do it. Anyway, it doesn't matter what the name of the company is. I mean, give us, if there's three companies left, give us what the cost is if there's three companies on one piece of paper. Breaking it down so that we can see, compare them. And then we know that this other guy is, excuse me for saying that, was one point eight million, up to one point eight million, but everything. And then we can maybe make an intelligent decision. You guys okay with that?
Well, although. Meter Systems, this agenda D item has already been done as of now.
Most of it.
Well, I mean, the fact is that we owe them another twelve thousand dollars.
We will, but by the time this meeting's over and we come together and bring the recommendation for the final selection.
So the twelve thousand is the next step.
Well, the step we're working on now is to complete it. It was already moving forward on that second step that the purchase order wasn't issued for, you know, we see from the original proposal it was. So I just, I didn't want to bring a proposal to you for three or four thousand dollars and approve the ten thousand myself. So that's why, it's just disclosure.
I guess my point is the number that you've had down here on this page of a billion, five eighteen, I'm thinking that's low based on what I've heard. So I'd like to see what the real number is, what I consider. And you're asking the three, on this piece of paper, you're saying we're going to be short of three hundred and eighteen thousand to the ledger. So I'd like to see for sure if that number's accurate or if it's more. Because he's talking up to a billion eight, if they allocate up to a billion eight somehow, in most cases it usually gets spread.
Yes, sir. One thing we, I was trying to show upfront at other meetings is we have pilot tech in here, which does the software side, which vendors aren't involved in, has to do with our billing system. And we had basically thirty-three thousand dollars in software costs. Twelve thousand of that will be recurring every year and the rest is a one-time cost to set up to going to the meter system. So there's thirty-three thousand dollars that didn't have anything to do with the vendors. They're suggesting it had to do with us internally in our software.
We need a hundred percent.
Okay, that's line I have every bit of it out and that's how we get to one point eight on a one point two five bid, that we'll bring back to get to next meeting. This was more for informational purposes and.
We've been doing informational now for three, two and a half months. I'm tired of this, let's get it done, we're going to do it.
We need the information and and we want to know the bottom line until negotiation's completed. So we're we're going to be working with estimated numbers until we have negotiation done.
That's only, that's only if we go the one way.
No, no, no. I don't know what one way you're talking about. What MeterSys is.
We don't, if we don't take him out and let him negotiate for us, we just, we're all the companies, right?
Well, then then we're responsible for managing the whole installation and making sure we got somebody who knows what they're doing.
If we take a company and let it out, we'll still put it in for you, okay?
Well, they'll put it in, but.
Somebody put in the last system, it's not working right.
Chris, can you bring that information back? Can you do, someone on the side who said he had six month something on, can you put a timeline on this?
Yeah, we have, we have a draft implementation scheduled in this presentation, but we'll have it in there. And uh we've taken some time with this with three meetings, but one to just educate the board on all these various issues and one we're getting ready to spend, you know, a billion eight or a million five or whatever you want to call it, that's a huge expenditure. I didn't want to rush into it.
Right, and then I'm going to talk, nobody talks later about seventy-two point three. Where is the monetary?
The monetary for this thing is that is our utilities, we're paying for it through our utilities. This this water system is to be, five of the waters.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was, it was budgeted at one point two five million. Of course, that was when the budget developed last year.
That's your budget for this year?
Yeah.
Here's my concern, my question that I want to address in this regard, going back to your days as well. Um I I received a call from a resident who talked to Chris and heard that our capital uncomfort was a little over two million dollars. I talked to Chris, he said a little over three million dollars. I've I've got our budget worksheet in terms of effort that's showing six million dollars and I need to know really what our capital is and I need that answer before I approve spending any money.
Sure, let me get get some of those differences in those figures where like a reserve account, that utility account and into the capital and some of the other totals, they have some investment accounts.
Yeah, I just need to know how it all works out and where it answers. If we've only got three million dollars and we're talking about spending three million dollars, I'm concerned.
And right now in that capital reserve account, which is obviously coming out of the utility receipts, um about three point, two point nine million was budgeted for three projects and there's probably, if those are going to go, the budgets will probably be even metering and if you fund both of those projects, you'll have approximately four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars left in the utility reserve capital account. And I'll bring that.
In previous week, when we were going through the budget, with our, my understanding and helping that, I thought we had something where in the middle of somewhere between six and eight million dollars in reserves.
I thought it was that.
And now I keep hearing this three million. What happens in the other three million?
Two, two point nine of that is in the budget this year to be spent on.
Okay, so if we if we spent two point nine million, is there three million in still in reserve?
Yes, sir.
Better be a hell of a lot more than that. We were supposed to start the year at nine point three million. I got the numbers, you were supposed to start nine point three million in fact according to your numbers that we sent out. We started the end of the year with ten million dollars in bank investment. Right? That's what it said, ten million. I think I had to take here some of those.
I mean, the financial statement.
Yeah. And according to my records, we have already moved one hundred and fifty-five thousand, you would say from last year's budget to this year because it was not a common. So we ended the year, as far as I can tell, at a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars was the number that we had budgeted, nine point three million dollars. We've been a hundred and forty-six thousand to our twenty-eight thousand plus to our side. So we have, we started here at nine point five million. So if you're telling me it's three, it's three spot.
Yeah, exactly. I'll uh I'll get you the details on that and go over the command and make sure we're all on the same page and it could be looking at different accounts and what's.
I'm looking at the treasury report. It said that we have one million eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. What's in that million dollars? Ten million. And and overall, we did the purchase. If we're right or wrong, that's the way that we could start the fiscal year at nine million and three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. But I figured we started really at nine million, five hundred and seven thousand, seventy-two dollars. Now, I can know my math is wrong.
Look, I've got something wrong. I mean, there's a big difference between five million, six million and three million. And I need that to call and probably.
I mean, other part of the conversation I've been at lately because, you know, the press report is right here. That was the one, I mean, excuse me, I'm reading it correctly. And this, I was going to bring this up.
And I'll get the details, not really the specific, the capital resource accounts.
I am new, I can't even not look at the same you guys do. I look at it like one and a half to ten. And I know there's an utility and there's a general, I know all that. But when I'm looking to see how much money you got, I look at it totally.
Okay, the clarification for some next week, I'll go over and make sure we manage all the specific figures and send it to you in writing.
Okay, well, okay, so are you guys okay with what I requested as far as the next week or how the budget should prepare? So are you guys okay with what I requested as far as the next week, or how the budget should prepare? So we would have this, we would have... He can give it to us as best he can. I'm not signing on a project that don't have much cost. Come on.
Well, we're bringing that, we'll bring that project proposal to you. Today was informational on the meter project implementation schedule, the last question, so...
You might have to find your...
I'm sorry. I'm going to say today was informational. We're not asking any decisions on it. We're going to have to come back.
I was saying, can you bring it to the next meeting?
Oh, sure. That's our, that's our intent. And, and this item we're on right now is really a big, $12,100 to finish out the contract with Meter Systems on.
We have the...
We need a month to recruit them.
$12,100.
I do.
Is there any public comment? I have a question about the bargaining point between manual reading meters versus saying no. Are we able to sufficient size to justify a project like this? We've got 4,000 meters, but over 50 miles. How many people are addicted manually reading those meters once a month?
Well, every organization, federal, we read them.
Well, I'm not talking about reading. I'm talking about being a company scratch, whether reading these meters manually. How many people would expect to be employed here, but they haven't read meters, if there's 4,000 meters on a 50,000 meter?
I appreciate the question a lot about the base.
There is this, no.
But we're having this as a manual reading. Well, we are in this and saw the same, that 4,000 meters, with the size of the utility you mentioned. Our smallest account is 600, operates 850. 600, that's a lot. But 300 meters, 600 population. So the point being, you are a very common size. We gave it in the sweat for utility, so apply all the... But this would remind that 80% of the money we're talking about has nothing to do with whether you read or vote people manually. That is labor for the meter and the meter itself.
Are you saying that AMI is more active than manual reading meters?
Well, just a moment, this is a process that does.
So it's not active?
It just isn't working. It's, currently, the process for, for the team is to go and pull the, and wipe on a piece of paper, the reading. And in that statement too.
The process is here, here's our hope that we've spent $2 million over the last 15 years from two different systems. We've got a dry eye, we faced that six or seven years ago, with the NSI system. There was first a badger in the first one, more in the second one, and now what is that about? More than four members, neither one put this badger on whom. But our badger reader is considered, let me know if there's any high business?
They have markets here.
They have markets.
They do.
Well, they have one. Will you do that for me, sir?
Badger is a cellular product.
I'm not asking what they are. I just ask the companies, are they, are they... Significant? Is badgers significant in the AMI?
Yes.
And is, is newer, is newer significant?
I would, I would need it to be in the top six.
Top six. And who are they considered now?
Master.
Master reader, are they in the top six? Okay, so, well, is it pretty reputable, or often a venture or a firm project, where a reputable company?
They're all in 678, I think.
Okay, I understand. So we've got 4,000 meters. When we, when we, when we went ahead with the water system, certainly, six or seven years ago, the typical, the examples that they gave as, along with the proposals, was the city of Carolina Michigan, 51,000 meters. That was an example of what they were proposing us. And here we are with 4,000 meters. It's kind of fine, but the work breaking, when we can, we can hire, we can hire people that are taking my company, higher competency on reading meters manually.
Yeah.
And we've got to have the meters that you've got to draw on the topic, to update the dictionary. And if that's playing 27 holes of golf a day, or, he's walking around with 50 miles. When he's taking a hundred shots in the meantime, certainly, he can read, he can read words, and fast as he can play 27 holes of golf. It's not, it's not rocket science. People are still reading meters manually. We paid a figure, the top of that meter, you know, it doesn't take a lot of time to read a few. I think we could hire two people at $18 an hour. And that's not going to cost $70,000 each. I think that would cover some of the fuelers, $70,000 for one meter here. But $18 an hour, it does, at least not $70,000 cost per year. I'm just saying, at all point, if you guys need what's necessary, where a system like us could be able to justify a 3,000 meter project, or a 1,800 meter project.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, I want to go along with your question of, is our size, was your question, is our size enough to have a system like this?
Versus a manual system, people manually reading.
Correct, okay. Henry County is one of our AMI customers. And they have only 1,200 services. They went to that account, they, they went to AMI due to their staff being behind because of manual reading. It took them weeks just to do one month's reading. And then they was, and, and all they were doing was going out, getting new usage, going to the next one, to the next one. They weren't even looking at leaks, backflows, they weren't looking at any of the other features that the water meter can't tell you. And that's why having the AMI system, you click the button, in less than 15 minutes, you've got all your readings. But then you've also got leak reports, tape reading, all of them, and those are, that's where the personnel can then go away from manual reading and then maintaining your utility infrastructure.
We know how our, our numbers are, because we read the data that comes out of the ground, that, that, that's the work. And we also know how many, how many gallons we fill from them. And the difference is, what we're, what we're just not recording. Not going to be covered by the rate that we charge per gallon. And that, this, to me, I just don't understand, I, I believe that there must be, there must be a break even point of where, how you justify AMI. I understand that the technology is all meat, and all working with computers and my tech and the rest of that, that's still. Basically, everybody was going through a lottery system for the third time in 15 years. We bought, we bought, we dragged it through, we told people, and we're involved in doing it again.
Yes, sir. I, I don't know if I can answer your question, but I can tell you from what I've seen and heard from other employees. If AMI depends on the level of service and accountability, like I was discussing earlier, on what you want to give the people of Center Lakes. An AMI system can give all those things. It can quickly put that unaccounted water losses, so you don't have to range your run rates. It can bring so many different things, and so many utilities at that point choose not to do it. Some do choose to do it, but, and today's regulations, that unaccounted water loss, we're going to be fighting for it if it gets to a certain point. Even from the, from officials, government officials. The regulations are so tight, the Texas system, the center work, the work, they're trying to set up to manage all those regulations and top it, not just reading water anymore. If that helps.
Okay, well, thank you.
Now, I'd like to answer your question directly, because we were talking about meter reading. We hired two full-time meter readers. And it takes, it takes them three months to read all our meters. So we're actually getting hard, hard meter readings on one-third of our system each month. So it takes us three months of those two people being out full-time.
Can I ask a question to the longer ones? If you put this system at 67...
Which measure?
Oh, my, you said... I mean, I thought, I'm trying to be based on... No, fine. George, I'm sorry, the resident. It's very average to me, based on the board's decision, questions, and John, I'm like, you don't want to do anything. If you find out how much money we're going to have when you stop. I'm a computer computer. President, he's calling us, meet. I have that stuff, and I said, he can't afford to do anything, based on the numbers I got from the press. But where you get your numbers from, obviously, isn't what they deliver, what it's saying.
Sir, I'm looking at the account.
That's all we do, that's, okay?
Sir.
You know. The other issue is, what's the, whoever you select, what is their estimate or forecast of return on investment? Are you going to be a year, two years, three years, on your, or are you losing that much water amount? Who knows? What's the...
This, this group said 79 years. This group said 79 years, Virginia.
79 years. The maintenance of the system was lightning wiper out, with the private system.
Really? You, you have to do their, their job at grounding it and making sure it's, is protected.
You know, the quality of lightning capital of the world, that's a good question. And where the system now, you can find refurbishment, major medical facility, water, hospital. We can afford to be without water anytime. We're, we're going to be looking at a lawsuit maker, a terror one. But think about those things and you, you decide, if you can't make a decision today, that's not... I think the governor manager owes the board. He needs to go through and evaluate each one of these. On this, you need to call cities where they are currently employed. Braves in the hurt, unless we have X number of meters in the rating. Call Braves, see how their performance is now. How, how much of the revenue is in the first one they came in, what's their payment situation? You need all that information before the staff can make recommendations to the board. Right now, to know when, what would be the kind of decision like this? You got your cars, sell one in my car. They can say you're really beautiful, not consistent, but may not feel right about your car. The same thing here. But if you're in no position to make any decisions, you just...
I think, yes, sir, come on. My name?
You know, I, I just had a question that, that you got off the top.
Why can't I even read your name?
Paul Palski, I'm a resident here. I also have, I'm a resident on the Sebring, in fact, usually, the gentleman's equipment there. But the question I had here was that I heard, a lot of a lot, I haven't been visiting for more than a year, a person, and I have been watching a lot. I guess the question I heard was, six, seven years ago, we hired a reputable company and we put in equipment. Is that equipment hardware wise, still viable, that would be built off of whatever that would do to reduce our cost? And just looking at alternatives, I'm surprised that we've gone through, look again, a reputable company that, certainly, I assume had warranty for this hardware at that company. And is that, if we throw it out, you know, I don't understand what the original failure rate was here, besides something about the annual purchase. On that meter review.
They spent approximately $1.1 million with Mueller. And over the past several years, that system went into disrepair. There were issues with the top end. They were offered to put a new top end in the system for $500,000 without guarantees, and this script will be filed litigation. And it's moving toward arbitration right now to try to get some cost recovery. And also working with Meter Systems, we're looking at some of those failure, failed meters, can we get those replaced under warranty? Or get some compensation. But right now, the, the system's in total disrepair. And if you're pointing, if you want, you can look at Mueller, you can look at the top end that wasn't working well for them. And you can look in the mirror right here. Because the, the staff didn't have the capability and training to run a utility and run a meter system at the same time. And that's software billing, field staff, you know, so it's a combination attributed to the failure.
Thank you. My, my current system is working correctly.
And we're looking.
Good afternoon, all of us. Good evening, President, again. I'm glad you, President, you mentioned that you're trying to recover some kind of money from the warranty of the old meters. They're chasing that down, which is very, very good. Well, the question I have is on the AMI metering system here, $1.8 million. Everybody knows, I'm very in favor of any grants that we could possibly get. There must be a federal program, there's so many of them, that would give some kind of relief to people that have to put in water meters to save water and make accurate accountability on the water use. So there must be somebody, some department that could help us out. Now, do you have any information about that?
Well, this was my question yesterday. Maybe, maybe, I don't have an answer, so I...
However, the answer would be, it's really safe, and the special district does create a possibility of implementation tool, grant funding. We do not steal a lot of grant funding for meter house. We've got 40 products only once all time.
Well, that's...
If I'm, if I'm... Wait, if I'm not mistaken, Ariel, you can answer this question. You checked into grants, are there grants available for this product?
Correct. So we spoke with them. What's available to, basically, a loan, if you will, run by the state of Hall and Clon, through SRF, through the state? But that is a loan, it's not a grant, it's a low interest loan.
Well, it just seems to me that so many programs are available. I, I hope you're really exhausted, every half minute. Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to, I'd just like to request this from our audience. This is public comment, and I don't mind a little interaction, but this is not question and answer. I really enjoy listening to people ask questions, right? Because it's, it's informative to us as a board too. But we, we need to have public comment. And we, and that's it. You know, if we want to ask questions, ask them ahead of time and, or talk them through the side, or we need to... Now, this is important to us too, there's a lot of... Is there any other public comment on, on this motion that we have to? Could you tell us again what, what...
The motion's to approve the expenditure of $12,100 for Phase Two of the Meter Technology Master Plan with Meter Systems.
I have a question. You're reading what the motion is, correct?
Yes, sir.
Why don't I have a copy? I don't have a copy of the motion?
Your gen, your gen item, that's...
That's, that's recommendation. We stopped away from, we used to have pieces of paper on everything in color.
The, the request of motions is, is the first thing on that page that you're...
What?
You know, the recommendations.
I don't, don't we see that, we don't see it by itself, like you used to...
All this is a request, that's the request of motion. We can change the request of motion, but we're...
For you.
Yes.
James.
Mary, please. Supervisor Harris?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips, yes. Supervisor Vazquez?
Yes.
Pass the open?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
And the next item we have on here, which is related to the, the meter program, and we may want to delay this until we make the selection of the vendor, even though we have to start moving forward with the upgrading of the purchase order in the amount of 25, 690 to Tyler Technologies. It's a one-time fee of $13,001 for the meter replacement project, and $12,600 in yearly recurring fees. It's a one-time fee of 13,000, oh, one oh, for the meter replacement project and 12,600 in yearly recurring fees. And that's from our info software that we use for our billing system. And any, any one of these meter vendors that we choose, if they're going to require that interface, it doesn't matter. Um, it's a software on our side. And I mentioned, the board approved a few months ago, $76,000 to do a propagation study. And it's really, they gave us a list of underneath we had in the field, location, E code, and that. And we provided that information to the vendor so they could come up with a propagation study, um, to show how many meters you can go, property management, that type of thing. So.
I, I would move that the table list until we make the decision. Uh, if the staff thinks we need to do some of this for the current, uh, software needs that we have for managing our water. I'd have you look at that, but I'd just move it to the table before we make a decision.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second it.
Any public comment?
Okay. Supervisor Garrett.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips, yes. Supervisor Noddy.
Yes.
Supervisor Brett.
This is on the.
On the table, this is a motion. President Goethe.
And item D, and we, same thing, this would be moving forward, uh, 119,000 to approve and execute a purchase order, uh, with meter sys, uh, for the terms of their proposal. And my recommendation at this time would be to table it till the next meeting, till we come back with the full recommendation of the budget numbers.
I would move the table.
I second. But let's get the frank figures on there also.
Yes, sir.
And anytime I see 129,000 this year.
Hey, is there any public comment on this?
Sure. Supervisor Phillips, yes. Supervisor Noddy.
Yes.
Supervisor Brett.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrett.
Yes.
President Goethe.
Then we have, uh, item D, and this is asking, uh, the request to motion is to approve the recommendations provided by the assessment appeals committee for the 12 applications that were submitted in detail on this agenda item. And the assessment committee met and reviewed the 12 applications that were put in, and we approved one, uh, which was out of the furniture road on US 27, where we were doing an assessment on that front of the fee to the property, which is actually the furniture road. Uh, for the property, the county does not assess them because it is a right-of-way furniture. Uh, so to be consistent with the county, we felt that was the right thing to do. Um, the other 11 were denied. Uh, the people were informed by email, we're sending them follow-up after with all the information. Did have some good conversations and follow-up with some of the residents and some of the arguments that they, uh, they made were pretty imaginative. Um, and one fellow has talked about the 364 for a vacant lot, and he goes, what about sidewalks? What about streetlights? What about some other items? And I said, well, sir, that assessment is a vacant lot, roadway, stormwater issue. That's it, there's no part of that fee that is related to any of those other items. Um, but it was a good discourse that the folks talking to them. Yeah, and they made some good points.
I, I'm hoping to approve, and thanks to the committee.
Second.
Hey, is there any public comment?
George Pusenberger, resident. I agree with the, uh, results of the committee, and I don't have disagreement with any, but I do have one, if ever. And that was the couple who filled their assessments that came up in Puerto Rico. I think they paid 17 or 18 years worth of assessments on 100 room lots. I don't know why they came up, perhaps they're, what, what they were paying for. But the district couldn't find their lot. Then the word was, there's no utilities, roads, nothing to it. So they requested dispensation, why should we pay for something that can't find? At one time, we had a program. If they, a couple similar of those folks, and believe me, we have a lot of people externally to Florida, who want their lots back there. Everybody's had a good sum of money, and those people still paying for, for their lots. But they were all shut and couldn't find them. And then I was pulled over, saw, tried to buy some, you can't find them. District used to have a policy, we had a group lots that were buildable lots. In other words, a law was served, everything would be built. Those folks would commit to build within five years, we had traded a lot. Obviously, they'd have to pay an increased assessment. But that wasn't offered to these people, because I'm not sure we have any lots. We give them all to the county, let them sell them like money, rather than us, or just avoid the taxes, or free. Where's it? Do we have any lots, buildable lots left of our own, with no money?
Yes, sir, we do, and we're working on updating inventory to see what.
So you were not committed, why didn't you make a buy offer?
I didn't have a viable lot I could show them or information to get.
I'm sorry, you say, yes, sir, no, you did or didn't?
No. And I'm, I'm not sure which one you're talking about, because the people, uh.
Six, 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 eight, right? First is dry. Or if they're not located by, yes, please do not send any work to that one. I prefer that. We've voted for a bona fide for a district that's tracked it some for 18 years. Now they come to look at it, someone to build, they'll look and find it. So they say, tough luck, paid the assessments underway, it's essential to share.
Or they say, just from a legal standpoint, my guess is that this person's recitation of the facts are probably a bit suspect. The Highlands County has a GRS system, and all you have to do is type in the tax ID number, it pulls up any lot with any picture.
I'm not, I'm not sure what they're saying. What do you mean, you say, they're coming up, they're frauds, they didn't pay assessment for 18 years?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, their lot is easily final.
Not, but the district didn't want to go to the county, they're coming to pay the assessment.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, if they want in with a, with a, with their, with their documentation showing the tax ID number of their lot, it would easily be final. So their recitation of the facts is suspect or likely. I don't think that what they say happened, actually happened.
Let me tell you something, my friend. I haven't been to Puerto Rico many times, I have people in Puerto Rico I know who own the lot here. One right across the street from where I live. I went to buy that lot. They don't have a clue what they've got. They think they've got a magnificent investment here. I talked to John, I paid $3,500 for the lot lot 20 years ago. It's got roads, service, women pools, everything. I was offered 12,000, I said, you know, yeah, good luck with that. My third point is. They should have been offered an alternative. If they found, let's assume they found their lot. How you get through it? Oh, but you can't run the demo app to get that number. You think you could find and get that county information? Have you ever been back in the back forty and tried to find it?
Well, I'm 100% certain I can locate it on, with a hair gel.
Yeah, I think it was a terrible decision, that's all I think. I think they ought to be contacting, saying, hey, we would really want real available lot. If you want to build, if they don't permit the build, well, that's personal.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Supervisor Noddy.
Yes.
Approving a recommendation. If I'm going to approve this, what I thought was, the comments that were just made. I mean, we. I mean, I think he's got a valid point with saying, so she would, uh.
I just, I'm probably right here on telling you, Chris. You know what I'm saying, that's just. Let's go out and look at it.
Oh, there's no roads there. There's no roads there.
I know. So they paid bills, didn't they?
You can approve the recommendation and still direct staff to follow up with the proper government. Is that okay, David?
Sure.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrett.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips, yes. President Goethe.
Yes.
Hey, landlord's election.
So following up on that. I would, I would recommend that if you ask staff to contact the resident and make an offer, if they're willing to build within X number of years, that we would, uh, trade their lot for a certain amount.
And the only concern I have is, uh, what we do for them, a lot of people don't, lots that can't be developed, and they're, they're not a buildable lot, you know. Okay, but, oh, we'll take a look at it, and I'll get that in the board again, and bring it back. It's not something we have right in front of us now.
At this point, I've got a consensus of two board members who've asked for that, and one who didn't think it was a good idea. So, I think we need to give, give your consensus before we find. Consensus. So everyone on staff should contact the party to make an offer for a buildable lot.
I think the second is the same. That will go up more than this one lot. I don't think this, I don't.
I don't, I, I'm not, how many lots do we have? That, that the county, is that something like, oh?
I, I could not answer that, we just started looking at that last.
I know, you have heard that.
There's an old, uh, an old map, but it's not up to date.
I, I haven't, I don't agree.
You don't want to do it?
Well, I'm not concerned. I know we don't have, we don't have buildable lots, okay? If we run out of buildable lots and we have another person like this, then are we obligated to create the road on the, to find a lot? And then put in the road, and water, and sewer?
No. No.
This person knew what they were bought, well, I can't speak exactly as to what they knew when they bought it, but the, the availability, they've been being built as an unimproved lot with no road access. So, if they thought they had a buildable lot, that's not the district's fault. Because the bills they received are unimproved, made of loss, with no road access.
I was in the meeting, I don't know what they said, were they at the, at the actual meeting? So, we don't know what they, what their opinion is or anything.
Right.
They just don't want to be building.
Correct.
What would we have to do to get the property? We.
We, we talked to their day. We gave them information, so I could go in.
And if they don't do anything, they still come as available?
We're, we're restricted to five years of back assessments, and I don't think they're close to being current. I think they get these bills and they don't pay them, so.
Yeah, I think they're five, it's not, this whole time, based on our regulation, it's not, uh, physically responsible to foreclose on it.
Pass.
You don't need to.
But we, we are working to update that list of the lots that we do most, so we can identify maybe ones that we'll keep in the future for public works or other items, the other ones we can put up for sale.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Is that? Okay, moving right along, landlord's election.
And, uh, I'll, I'll apologize for the confusion when we first put this together. Um, I just assumed when we talked in December that the landlord election was on the fourth Friday, um, January the 28th, that that is going to be the election date. And, uh, I was informed that they typically did it in conjunction with another board meeting. So what our suggestion would be, and we can't do that, is just move the landlord's election to the board meeting on February 4th.
Here's the problem that I got. Somebody took it upon himself to move a meeting without telling anybody. I assume this is how it happened. We are the board. We are to be informed of changes that we made on things that we go on.
There was no change, the policy manual was such.
I know, we had the landlord meeting scheduled for the second meeting of January. However, we were wrong. That's fine, we were wrong. Somebody should have said, when he found out, we were wrong. Not to change the meeting honors by itself. That's not the right way to go, is it?
We need to reschedule landlord meeting for the 21st.
I'm sorry?
We need to reschedule landlord meeting for the 21st.
You never did? It's always the second meeting in January since I've been here.
It's the fourth.
Well, I don't care, you know what, stop with reading the policy meeting. Read what we did. I, I mean, we made a mistake, we made a staple in it on the 21st.
We, we may well have made a mistake in scheduling our board meeting for the 21st, not reading the policy manual, but the policy manual says it's the fourth Friday.
Why were you not notified of the change that he made? We, we were, were you notified?
I wasn't notified, but.
Were you notified?
I, I remember a conversation with Noah, he didn't.
Were you notified? I didn't give anybody, get notified. And you know how you find out? I read it in the, what's that, the, published, the, uh, newsletter.
It was in the newsletter, it was in my management report for the meeting.
Yeah, and we're realistic, because I assume, if, I, I made a mistake. I assumed the landlord meeting was going to be in the second meeting of January. My fault, I blew it.
With that being said, I just think it's. Chris is new, you know, somebody grouped up, let's move it to the February 4th. And I don't think you're doing this again, I mean, I don't know.
Well, what we need to have is on that board meeting calendar, we adopted in November, is have that landowners listed, because by ordinance, it has to be on the fourth Friday in January. So you, you had it at another time, it was in opposition to that ordinance. That need, that election could have been declared invalid because you didn't hold it.
Right.
I'm sure that, uh.
So I'm just curious, are you going to move it to the flood, which you're going to provide it? It's not legal.
Yeah, you're allowed to move to the meeting if you can't have it or.
It can be after or can't be before.
So when you send out all this stuff, are you sending out these agendas and everything by yourself? Are you working this up by yourself? Or do you have help?
Some, some of it I'm doing myself, like a lot of these items, if I'm.
You not working at president of the board, preparing these objectives?
Uh, we do every week, on Monday.
Are you not being president of the board and making these agendas?
Yes, sir.
So you both made a mistake.
Yes.
And what we'll do is.
What am I saying?
And my suggestion, um, would be to approve the, uh, exhibit A, which is the affidavit ownership, the exhibit B, the proxy form, and the exhibit C, those three exhibits, and hold the landlord election on February 4th, in conjunction with the regular board meeting scheduled for that day.
And I think that's the thing, though, we, we can't do it before because of the time of, correct? We need four weeks of, at least four weeks of campaigning or getting ballots, it's, we can't make it shorter. And now, and I'm sure the next one landlord election is mine. I'm sure Chris will remember when we meet within the code and about the tournaments, that the fourth one is the landlord meeting. Well, just do it, there was a mistake made.
By the board.
Innocent, innocent mistake. So what? We've made mistakes before. It's not a big deal, let's change it to the fourth and get on.
I didn't, it is a big deal, it's been published on the 28th.
Yeah, and, and I. I think it's a, I think it's a big deal, and furthermore, based on, uh, the last landlord meeting election, uh, it went on for hours because of the count. And I don't see a problem with having the election on a day that doesn't have regular board meetings, because we're going to have a lot on the next agenda too. So I, I'm, I like the 23rd and the 4th for the board meetings and the landlord meeting on the 28th, as scheduled.
We have a, a quorum, um, at the, on the 28th, the three board members could, we could proceed. Landowner election on the 28th.
This is really good.
Yeah, why, I think, uh, since Craig is running the public, you know, he wants, this was not made to do anything that, you know, and, and I just think it's important for Craig to be here.
He can't be there.
And he can't be here.
So he's not going to be campaigning that day, I would hope certainly not while you're holding the election.
Well, I can't be there either.
Well, but it's, it's a landlord meeting, not essential if you're there as a supervisor.
Yeah, the board, the board convenes and then.
It would really look good for me, who, I have turned my document in saying that I was wanting to run. Sometimes I wonder. sometimes wonder, but I don't attend the landowners meeting, because I already had a previous agenda. That, that doesn't, that doesn't settle, it's not right.
I mean, I'm just pointing that, we have a, I mean, I think we're going to have to end up, I think, voting for the fourth. But we have a problem that we published the 28th.
Yeah, but we've got time, we're sure.
We'll, we'll renotice it all legally in the paper and on our website. Get the information out, and allows more people, and allows us more days for early voting, so there's an advantage to that.
I just think it's important, you know, you know, my regard, I would want to be here, and it's not Craig's fault that he, you know, he's going to be gone, so I would like to maybe.
The board is the same time they had another meeting scheduled?
Yes.
Their board meeting.
So sure, based on your comments, you knew that that's where the board should be.
Well, I'm just saying, it took us all day to figure it out, the first place, but.
Should be a role in the meeting, so. If you like, we could, we could notice it and move it to February 11th, that Friday, which is a non-board day. And the board shows up and they convene as the board, and then they let them.
The only reason I'm bringing it up is with the fact that we won't really have a board meeting that day, if what happened last Friday happened again. And I'm fine with that, if that's what you guys want.
And this board that makes the change.
Having been there, and I know what transpired, because they were verifying proxy votes, but could not the landowners meeting be put in recess as the votes are being counted or the proxy are being counted? So we could go back to having a regular board meeting during that time, if it is such that it's going to take hours like it did the last time. And have a board meeting and be done with the board meeting prior to having the total available for the votes. I mean, there was, there was plenty of time to handle a meeting during that time when they were verifying process.
And it will be, that there was a change made to the ordinance and also the board change, instead of one vote for $1 assessment, now it's one vote for each property, which makes it a lot quicker from an admin side to put that together.
Right, it brings me to another challenge, nobody knows that. I can tell you, I've talked to 15, 20 people who are now eligible to vote, who have no clue that they can. So we've got to figure out a way to communicate that we have changed the vote. And all these Canadians and people who will not hear year round can vote, but they don't know it.
They voted last night.
Yes.
All you said is.
Yeah.
They were landowners.
They're landowners.
And we are making sense?
Last year's election?
Yeah, it was over. Well, that's all, it's the previous. Right, landowners.
The only thing that's changed is the way the votes are counted, like, is how many votes you get. It used to be $1 one vote, and now we're going to one lot.
One lot.
Why don't you?
They don't, yeah, one tax ID number, per tax ID number.
Right, that's the only thing we change.
That's it.
And the biggest, the issue that, that, I don't know where your head is, but, well, we changed, but I don't, but it was a lot.
The popular vote, they always got to vote and prove it to the Canadians.
Correct. You know, landowners.
But Canadians in snowbirds, because you didn't have to be a resident of the board, you had to be a landowner. And those people, whoever was a landowner, had had made assessments in the previous year, they were allowed to vote.
Okay, well, what I need is a motion by somebody.
Yeah, one, one more point on the past practice is that we have ceded the elected landowner for the meeting, the day of the landowner meeting, so that any further meeting takes place. So if, if we move to the February 4th for the recess, and then a landowner election, which could be Craig or could be the other party, may be out of the opportunity to sit on the items scheduled for that amendment.
The town, the, the, the vote still has to be counted by the fourth Friday in, in.
In January.
In January.
The.
So that should have already happened.
Well, if, if we don't have hope that we vote to move the election till February 4th, then it won't happen on the 4th.
We can't really be a right.
Well, the policy.
It has to stop, it has to stop by, by the fourth Friday in January. Even when you go vote, you get down after that day.
And regardless of the state, so the, the, the election can't be held that day, if you go to the next practicable, practicable time. I don't.
So the legal thing, it can be moved and the election, and those are done, all the voting is done on the 4th.
The voting is done at the landowner meeting, when the landowner meeting occurs, is technically supposed to happen on the 4th Friday in January, or as soon as practicable thereafter.
President asks for a motion, I'm going to make a motion, and we call the election as scheduled on January 28th and approve the form.
That's the motion, is there a second? There's no, there's no second, you need a motion.
Well, I don't. If we're legally able, I'd like to see it over the board.
You are legally able to. The ordinance.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second, is there any public comment?
We had these conflicts, they have, we had these conflicts before, and we always made it stand in real, but it's just like everything else, if we do it, fall off the wayside. The MDA and WDA and the district office sit down and look at the schedule and make sure there's not a meeting on any day, wherever it's going to be, off term. Because we had this, we had this problem before, we thought it was settled, I guess. They asked, we did that.
We did that, and we missed, we missed it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I follow that. No, I, I went to 20, if you did that and decided on the 20th, and you thought it was a good day, I didn't know about the realities of it.
I, I don't know how you can extend the election, unless it's written in, in the, in our charter, that you can, you can move, you can move it, so you can, you can. I always thought the votes had to be done by last Friday in January. So if you're going to say you're going, you're going to allow voting, and tell, and tell a landowner to do it. You can vote up and tell a landowner to do it. So if you're changing everything, if we have 47 years.
One exception, I don't think this is legal for me. But the, based on my record, I don't have it right here in front of me, but based on my recollection of the ordinance, this hasn't, it's going to be held the 4th Friday in January, or as soon as practicable thereafter, it cannot be held at that time, that's what we're saying now, is that we, the board is saying it cannot be held at that time. And so the vote is to be extended to the 4th, at which point that's when the landowner meeting is going to be, at the conclusion of the landowner meeting, that our voting will be allowed. So I'm happy to provide some legal.
But the future landowner meetings will do it.
Correct, it's likely they'll do it on the 4th to the ordinance.
Right.
We're still reporting to the ordinance, but will we do it on this specified date?
I'm uncomfortable with you saying, that's my recognition, on practical actions. Nobody have a copy of the policy manual?
It's not the policy manual, it's the county landowners.
And I do.
Yeah, I thought I had a copy right here, but I reviewed the ordinance, so it can be moved. Right now, we have a motion on the floor to hold the election on the 20th.
And we're having the discussion.
And we're having public comment.
I just want to clarify one thing earlier, that I was up here and the president said that I should not be questioning of somebody in the audience. Well, I just have to explain to you, first of all, we didn't have an agenda planned, which, we're at house. Which, we're at house, I understand that, but you know, collectively, I cannot talk with everybody like this. You have to have a kind of a Q and A, because what else can you do? You send an email and people don't respond to the email. You've got people here to represent the company, and then you've got your worker here that's, that April, that's looking up grants and things like that, and then, as far as the people out there, if they really pay attention, their questions are answered, but you'll have to ask the question. So apparently the bill fact's available, I understand that.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else?
More prompt order again. What's the basic issue with not having it on the 28th? There is a quorum available, unless somebody else gets sick or falls off. Well, there isn't, is it all based on the situation that one board member is running for board, and you won't be here?
Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll go back too, because when the board approved the calendar in November, and looked at the golf tournament, and I was here, and so Dave here was approving, then two weeks later, it was brought up, oh, you know, there's a landowner election that's coming up, and I looked at the ordinance, and I said, it's January 28th. And that wasn't put on our calendar, and it should have been, and that would be something.
Except, well, I was a real student, I don't care who made the mistake, but the mistake. The ordinance says the 4th Friday, that's no difference, it's been anyway for a while. The fact that two board members aren't going to be here is their partial decision.
Unless you're going to the hospital, you're going to play golf, I'm for sure.
Well, there's nothing wrong with that.
How about, well, we publish a schedule, and I arrange with three, five days on the schedule.
Right, you can take a $2 million turn to a $5 million, I'll get this all the time. The issue is, it's going to be on 4th. 4th is three people. There's two people running for the board, I'll take bets right now, who's going to win. He doesn't have to be. $1,200 in my pocket, I'll put on one shot, and the money one take. So I mean, let's, let's, want to beat this thing to the death, have it on the 28th and get on with it. I guarantee I'm going to be able to win.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Do you want me to read this real quick?
Yeah.
Right, section 9983, effective of failure to hold election, whatever due election shall be offered, projects are required by this article to be held by the landowners at any particular or stated time or day, and for any reason, such election is not held at such time or on such date, and in such event, our duty to hold such elections shall not cease or lapse, but the election shall be held thereafter when practicable. And in accordance with the procedure provided by the article, that's what's going to happen. If we have it. Other one?
Okay, turn it off.
I'm, I'm the one positive problem, and I just, it's not set. Again, I'm staying. Right, it's come this far, yes.
Supervisor Phillips, yes. Supervisor Fettell?
No.
President Hilton? Your room, of course, you're a G P manager.
Before we read this one up, I would like to take a look, until we know exactly where we stand financially, before I make that motion. I'm willing here to table or to discuss an approval of the irrigation project, until we know where we stand financially, because of the discrepancy between how much capital we have. I can go with a preemptive proposal.
You know, if I, if I were to before you make that motion, I would listen to the way I'm saying it, it's kind of nonsensical. I mean, I'm not making that motion, I'm going to, that would be five minutes, please. We don't have to.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. Okay? Thank you. That's it.
Such a bad number.
Obviously, when we're going through the budget talks, I think we've estimated that this was going to be coming down our budget, even when we have those talks, because that's why we were talking about the whole turnaround. Greens, which may or may not happen, because we knew this was going to be up in our budget. Now, the number we have with 1.3 obviously came from Alvin and Associates, which was a very large contractor who put this whole bit together.
That's not true. I had a copy of the report, but it's 1.7.
Which, but that is.
Don't say 1.3.
But that includes the pump station and the green surround, which we already done. So that number of. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the pump station.
Correct. I just learned coming from this, how do I ever trust you guys with the number? You can't miss it by this much, it's ridiculous. It's embarrassing.
I know, but I just sort of, you're right, this is obviously one hour of the country. We live in a different world than we did three years ago. And all those projects, I mean, these meter projects at $600,000, different than what it was when they investigated three years ago. Projects that were built out six months ago are 30% higher than just from six months ago. That's just the way it is right now and what we're living in. And when we're talking last March, last April, and it's hard to predict a year in the future. I don't, I don't have the crystal ball to tell you that, but I think we all knew from this, this project was going to fill the budget.
And you're saying, Jimmy, you're saying that you told us in June, July it would be 1.8?
Yes, sir.
And we didn't bother to change the budget?
I didn't have the option, the budget was down to July. It wasn't done just then.
Oh, we didn't, well, finalized is September. So I, I have a just question, why did we would not have changed the budget to 1.8? If we wanted to have it done, because obviously Million Tree wasn't going to get it, and we should have. I don't understand why we didn't change the budget.
Well, I can assure you, now, I can give you always this number yet. I didn't go full physical numbers, which nor did Alvin or anybody else in 2018 to give you a real number. If I'd have gave you a number in July, August, September, it wouldn't matter at this point unless you would have committed at that point. So whatever, 1.8 would make it a whole lot closer than 1.3. I agree, but without 1.3 and getting all the numbers straight, I wouldn't have been able to give you real numbers anyway. You asked me personally at this meeting what I thought since David probably.
I did say.
I did, so we should have invested.
I just don't understand why we should have. Picking us off heads that we had to change our budget. Because if we knew going into it that there was, in your estimation at that time, it's another half million.
Yes.
And if that's, I don't understand why we wouldn't have put that in our budget at that time. To more, because you can't do that.
I totally agree with you. I don't have the conversations, that was a whole conversation. Why did, whether we were talking about the trouble with.
Well, we did, we heard a lot of.
I understand, we'll do.
This was a million eight just on there.
And you were all in the same room.
But why didn't we get the, why didn't we change the budget on this? Because now we're sitting here and something's going to have to give.
We have any?
And we had, data at that time suggests that we needed to change it.
You know, you missed, let me put it in perspective, you missed it by almost 10% of our entire budget. That's not true. And I'm a company, how are we supposed to run the board when you got things like this happening?
If we were watching something in August or September, you still would be paying higher prices.
I don't doubt that.
But the impact is significantly different than 900,000.
I agree.
It would be 400,000.
Yes, sir.
And you had a, yeah, okay, the pandemic caused all of them to go crazy. And it's gone up because of that.
Yes.
That I can more understand. The fact that we went from 1.3 to 2.2, and you're saying that we did the 1.8, but then that should have been counted, yes, that we have the budget. You ain't going to get it for 1.3. So who's kidding yourself? What, and what it's supposed to be, your best to guess at that time, your scientific guess.
Yes, sir.
So.
And that's what, if you guys want to show her, I'm fine showing.
No.
And.
Jimmy.
The only thing I wanted to do is, like I said, there'll never be another request from me without. All we're trying to figure out is really what, we're assuming it's just the correct price, now we just have to figure out how we're going to support you in doing it.
Yes, sir.
It was easy before when we put in the budget of what it was, and, and, you know, we can handle that now. All of a sudden, now we're talking 900,000 more. I mean, how much is turnaround going to be?
I would say turnaround would be five to 600,000 at this point.
I mean, you got, you said less.
I'm, we're still going through the motions, you will have turnover, I promise. So if we gotta go to 2023, 2024, put it on for a budget at that point, we'll have a real number. And it'll probably have an asterisk, right? Because it's off, based on the controlling mastermind.
But based on, I, so you're saying now, turnover instead of being 350, it's more like 500?
I would say minimum, I'm retired now.
Yeah. The only plus is 150,000 you're doing a year, right? Is that what you're calling it, the loopset?
I want to say it was right around 190 or 175 to do it.
Yeah, I think it was in the 200s, so now it's about 550.
Well, the length is just off the chart right now.
Well, I think we're definitely going to need that number, because obviously.
I, it's going to be.
I don't know what year you would want to put that in. I mean, we're going to have a conversation amongst ourselves, I assume, I would say you have to eliminate all your capital projects at this point, other than this, if you proceed with this.
The one hundred and eighty one I think we have is a replacement of the wall in the restaurant, which is, I think we have 40K budgeted, and that's.
I think you're going to do the D-Box for the.
The practice.
The ground management, yes.
I mean, that's 100,000 for your.
We can, we can manage without either of those.
I just love.
Okay, and Ariel, I'd like you, or Chris. What is the likelihood that we would spend the playground money in 2020, in this fiscal year?
I don't anticipate that we're going to hear back about the first act until around July. I'm going to go ahead and go in sort of case of. Knowing that, probably not going. If we're talking about the project being completed before October 1st.
I personally believe we want to start until next year.
Right.
I'm not that sure I'm going to say that.
So you're saying as if, like, if we're looking for a lot of the money, taking the 350,000 that we allocated to the playground, moving that into fiscal year with a 2020, 2020?
That would be one consideration we should have.
For us timeline wise, that would not be unreasonable, considering we have.
Definitely, and it's a, how often is probably July?
It's probably July anyways, and then you, at that point, we're giving the company the green light to go ahead, we've got to talk about plans, so. I, I don't think that that would be unreasonable for us.
All right, Chris, in conjunction with what Mr. Holt saw yesterday before, when you present us with a budget for where we are monetarily, update, give us all a copy of capital expenditures for the next five years, so that we can look at it and make changes that we deem necessary at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I, I guess my other alternative I would suggest here, based on the comments that were made earlier in the day, is we're looking at a 700,000 difference between what we budgeted and what the expense is going to be. 700,000 divided by 350 members is $2,000. Over 10 years would be $200,000 of euro assessment for the match.
Well, that could be a conversation that we have. That's why, I mean, it's not, I mean, he can put it under the table when we look at the numbers.
What is our golf membership number right now?
48, I think these are international members. Who's in 48 under?
One second.
How many memberships? We start a year for this current year right now that I'm on?
Why don't you just supply, Chris, with your updated memberships?
Absolutely. Absolutely, so the reason I'm a little wishy-washy on that is because we have that international membership. That's all, I'd have to, I'd have to take a minute to physically tell someone, but.
Change, just assumed that the international membership is temporary, based on, consider those to be full-time members.
I can give a very close number here.
Right, that's, right, that's what.
Where are we getting that?
So this is just on the construction, do you remember? Yeah, I'm, I'm. I haven't finished about golf, but.
I think there was an agenda in the card or something.
Okay, so, yeah, it's always pretty well after.
Right, one point there was a discussion about tabling the. I'm sorry? There's, because there's, this agenda ID, this hoteling, a clone point is talking about, I think they made a motion to table, is that the goal now? To table us until?
Well, the downside of table here, we're suffering a potential loss of a hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly.
The plus side is, we'd weigh it first at Million Three, we thought we had $6 million, and we only have $3 million, and that's a concern.
Very natural. We have 10, what's the probability that by January 21st, when we have our next meeting, the price will go up on the flight?
100%.
Now, because I'm your top supplier.
Yeah, well, I mean, really, in the last 30 days, it's, it's gone from a half to 2%. That's all Andy was saying yesterday, he goes, it could bounce either way, it might even go down if we get that fuel. Good luck. So.
Can you interrupt me? We need a motion to add something.
Well, we're going to, I mean, we're going to do this. How we pay for it.
Well, if we only got $3 million in unencumbered reserves, take this out of, I'm not going to vote for it.
Unless I'm reading this wrong, somebody tell me it says $10 million that we have.
That's the problem. And because the trailer that we had, we put that to the foot together, isn't where we would answer that? I want to be sure where we are before we approve spending $2 million.
I don't think we put this together, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Are you ready? Omar, are you ready?
No, that should be, Amanda was working on it, and those numbers were just sent and developed by Infomart, but that's our, that's our budget numbers that came from. And I want to ask Amanda to just go through, because I want to prepare the reserves and make sure, I can give you an answer, I'm confident, and I can't answer you right now.
I know, it's just two of us, but I kind of agree with you, that I kind of like the way that we're speaking, because we may have to make decisions. Again, this, this is a five-member board, if we, we have people, we have people upon our duty, three votes is all safe, so.
Well, my like now, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Hilton, that's a motion and a second to table. So we can take the vote for it, table it, and see if it passes.
I think that'd be the best.
I'm confused now, they're only asking for one part of it, right? Not asking for the whole thing to be approved.
That's the requested motion. The requested motion is what's there on the agenda ID, but that motion wasn't technically made, there was a motion to table and have it sent aside.
In further discussion, I would be willing to amend the motion, or, or, I would be willing to not vote in favor of tabling it if the board was willing to say, we'll put 1.3 million if the members will accept the 200.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading this financial report now. You keep talking about utility capital fund. That's 3.3 million. That is a fact, that's what the total TD Bank says for the utility fund. They should have certificates of deposit of 2 million. And you also have LGIP of 4.6, 4.7 million. So it's just the $10 million.
So it would come from LGIP. If you needed extra money, then.
The general fund was 528,000. The prime CIP is 271. Water Walker General Fund FDIC, 2 million, and Walker, Water Walker CIP, a million eight. For the total of 4.7 million.
So that's money, there's money there, since you want to pull it out of your investment.
Oh, well, see, but, but we, here's the problem, but that's a $10 million reserve that we have. Like I said, we've always said that in our minds that we have. The problem is Omar, well, but he kept, was talking about this 3.3, that's just the utility fund. Well, actually, the utility fund operating at 1.8, and then back being da-da-da-da-da-da, but the general fund accounts 284. Utility fund was 1.8. And I told that TD Bank was supposed to be 3.4 million, 3.3 million.
So I'll say one more time, be it right or be it wrong, Omar moved goods, moved monies, excuse me, for one account for none to make things work. We did not use utility money just for utilities. They might have been wrong, but that's how we do it. So you can argue, have an argument about that. So wherever the money came from is where it came from, general fund, security fund, what have you, to make things work. So that's why we really have, in my opinion, like over $9 million, like, I worked through the middle.
Sure, and, again, I was referring to the reserve account and the utilities, and also the money that was budgeted at 2.95 for the three projects, and then a 3.4 total.
I agree, I agree, and I'll go either way, because the problem is waiting, see, I had to do the motion to okay what he's talking about, so it doesn't cost us another couple hundred thousand more.
And I'll still try to get on budget finance options as well, we can finance the total profit, the 400,000, if you finance, you got to take that.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I just was saying, I would leave the burden on your account, that's all.
Yeah, but the interesting thing, finance.
Or coin miners.
Which is more than we're making on the investment.
Exactly.
I'm going to look at the project.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second, let's go one up there, we're both from there. We can have another motion.
Well, if the tabling passes, then there's no other motion.
Yes, so that would be public comment. Well, there's another thing.
Yes, any public comment?
Supervisor Harris?
This is the table.
The table, table, the whole table as it is. Table, whole.
The table decision's the last thing.
Based on, as it's written.
Correct.
So we can do another motion.
The motion right now, that I said in second, is, is the table is motion to pass.
Question for clarification, if this motion fails, and we come back to another motion to discuss approval, and it fails, can we come back to the table discussion? Are table ones approved? And I'm going, that's the rule to do. That means if, if this motion to table doesn't pass, then we can have further discussion about a motion to approve. And if it doesn't pass, we can come back to the motion to table. Okay.
No.
Supervisor Phillips?
No.
Supervisor Devon?
No.
Supervisor Brooke? President Phillips?
Yes.
Okay. Now we need another motion.
Correct. Well. Well, from ourselves, we're, what, maybe, Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
Tell us exactly again, what's, what's going, what do you need, what do you request? Forget about the whole deal now, just what's going up in place. The, all the pipe that's going in the ground, the valve's going over the sprinkler heads, the main is going down the sides, and that's, that's about it?
I mean, that's about 600,000?
Yes, sir.
And Kansas?
I'm sorry.
150,000.
The total was $900,000 for all the parts.
That's including the total profit that we already.
Yes, sir. 174,000, to say 200,000 is basically the total profit. 700,000 is what you're talking about. How much could it possibly go up? It could go from a half to 2% within 10 days. They, so, here, here's what happened yesterday. So we were getting, we had a meeting, it's only back at the pricing, so our pricing plan, when Andrew, that gave me the one at our last meeting, that already went up again. He called and asked them to please honor the pricing that we got from our last meeting, and they stood by it, but they said they would only do it until the 10th.
Yeah.
Of this month, to guarantee the prices that we had on our meeting last. So it's, it's about 700,000. And it could go up a 1%.
Yes, 7%.
2%.
2%.
140,000. So we're talking about.
Or 14,000.
14,000. So we're talking about 14,000.
Yes, sir.
Well, yeah, that's, I just wanted to make you aware, I just wanted to explain, 14,000, I think we, we. Too fresh, see, I will.
Now we can go back to you.
I have no other motion.
I make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
We just, and then you said no? No, we're going to make another motion, after further discussion.
Yeah, after further discussion, I think that's what the issue was, is that people wasn't, nobody was understanding it was 14,000.
Now, I'll say it.
I have one more question. In this quest, the labor, is it included in the new price or the old price?
The labor is the, the new price. The 2, 2, the $2,400,000 is all in with labor and material.
And the real price is just over $2 million.
Yes, sir.
Because of the discounts.
With your package discount? Yes, sir.
And the, the package discounts were holding for the next year?
Yes, the 40 is going to stand by that, you know, and they, I think when we first signed the commitment, that we had 98 on that.
Right.
So I, the only other thing I would say is that, you know, the contractors are going to get, the closer we get towards the summer, it's going to get harder and harder to get the contractors.
So, but we're just talking to you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's, well, that's fine with me, thank you.
Okay, is there another motion?
The motion is like, um.
The motion is like the table, for the, for the next four, making all the.
So that is. You should probably call for, um.
Any more public comment? All right. Supervisor Phillips?
No.
Supervisor Devon?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooke?
Yes.
Supervisor Harris?
Yes.
President Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, staff reports, and the general council report.
Okay, general council report is up first, okay, there's a little bit of a growth base here, it was there on the, on the staff report that there'd be a resolution. I got this, this agenda on December 30th, and if it was going to be a resolution, it had it in the action item. So anyway, it'll be coming forward on the, maybe on the 21st. And I'll be, I'll be communicating better with Infomart about when I need to have stuff to them, so that makes it into the court pack. So.
So we have this resolution information.
Correct, yes, for that. No, 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 because I say, this isn't, this isn't listed in the action agenda, so we can't, technically, this is anything to hold on. Because there's, there's no resolution that was included in the court pack, because it wasn't prepared, so.
But can we have some discussion on that, about, have some discussion as to whether or not Cortez is the right place for the approval, which is likely real.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, we can, we can absolutely have that talk, we can do it now, or even during, uh, board to board, however you like to do it.
Mr. President, which way?
Well, we can have it now.
So, has anybody else, whether or not the alternative to a Cortez extension would be highly popular here in the area as opposed to a less populated connection to Schumacher would be advisable? Or does that not come to the intention of the bill?
Yeah, I, I can just speak, I looked at it, and there is no other place for, for us to connect with any, it'd be a big extension.
Yeah, we're talking about.
We have to, well, there's, there's some streets that are within there, but that aren't any, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, they're not there, so the only thing we have is Valhalla.
And that's quite a ways down.
And that's quite a ways down, and in this proposal that we spoke to, the county wants to go, Chris, do you know how many, how much further down they wanted to extend it?
About 1,200 feet?
It's, and I think it took up seven more of our lots. So there is something there off of Granada, if we want to come through, but it'd be a heck of a lot more than 100,000 dollars to connect. I just don't, I, I personally don't think that they're going to pay. I mean, that's my honest opinion from meeting with them, and I didn't say too much, but they're kind of set in stone, and, yeah.
Okay, that's that, not the commissioner.
Yes, not the commissioners, and that's why I thought this would be a good idea, because this will come in front of the commissioners.
And then it comes in front, we'll have a delegation there to stand up and get us some at the table.
Yeah, the problem's going to be is that some of the residents on Cortez are not happy with the concept. And if we go to the commission with our saying, you know, this is really what we want to do, and residents say, no, we don't want you to do that, we're going to have an expensive report council.
And you are going to find that, because I've talked to a couple residents already, they're asking about the plans, so there they are, they've been engineered. Well, we don't want to come through here, unless you want to engineer it, you'd pleasure.
It's the street, people are already traveled, and it's just going to become worse.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I mean, we already go down to the yellow post. And that's not going to change, it's only going to become worse as they build more and more houses out that way, because that is the back door out to get over to Schumach. So the traffic is going to increase regardless. All we would do would be maybe make it a safer, safer route than what we're currently in. And, and the traffic's going to be there, I, we can't divert it any other way.
And I agree.
In fact, it would take it less through the populated areas, because right now, they either have to turn on Granada to go over to what is it, Barzona? To get out.
Yeah.
Or you go all the way down to the yellow post and turn on, I don't know the name of that road. But then, and that goes through quite a bitter public area. So I, I think, you know, if you really want to minimize the impact on that neighborhood, would be the best thing to do is to continue on Cortez over to Schumach. I just wanted to be sure of the board.
Well, you see, when.
Well, I'm just telling you that way, I just wanted to be sure of the board, that's the only value, that's the position we're going to take.
And this is one of those things that faces us all the time, it's what's best for the district, or like, it's best for 30 people, or 100 people. Because there's 8,000 people here. I mean, the last census, there was 7,700 people. And, and our job is to do what's best for the entire district, and I understand if there's people on Cortez that doesn't want it. But if we look at it and just think about it, if we want it best for the district, we can extend Cortez.
But the traffic is going to be there regardless of whether we do it or not.
Well, that's why we get caught in this, some people complain, well, yeah, there can be, I complain about everything. Or on 100, but. Well, that's why we get caught in this, uh, some people complain, well, yeah, there can be, I don't complain about anything, or on 100, but. We have to make what's, and for me, it's, it's a whole brainer, but I, I find for the commissioner, the whole problem.
Right. But, but in order to have that happen, we have to have commitment from the, from our, and I just want to make sure that's still there before we, when it sounds like it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring that back to the, to the 20 feet on the 21st. Um, also, we contacted on your, your day, there's some in the process of, of drafting a litigation report, annual litigation report that they, uh, request. I've got meetings scheduled with, uh, Cliff Rose's office, who's looking to help the district with some of its closures that we're still, um, maintaining, and, and as well as, uh, Brandon Craig, available Craig in La Coguilla. About where that's going, I've got meetings scheduled, then both next week, uh, was happening with Mr. La Coguilla's files. We're hoping that would take place this week before the board meeting, but with the holidays, it's just going to happen. So I think that would, uh, everything is just, correct, everything that this will be is, as, as staying like is just taking a whole way back right now. So hopefully, after next week's meetings, we'll have some direction, uh, and some points of recommendations on where we can take it, you know, what potential litigators can take, take over those things. Other than that, that's all I really have.
Chris? Just touched on a couple things that I left on your desk. Um, we've got the draft on wastewater rate study from the Florida Rural Water Association. And, uh, our plans will be to allow a couple weeks to review that draft and we'll put it on the website. Makes residents like to comment on it also.
Should we make sure that we have the?
Yes, sir, it's on your desk.
What's that? Wait, wait, wait.
And this is the rate, you, rate?
Okay.
And that just came to us Tuesday, that's why I sent the board back, I mentioned it. But we'll do that and review it, then we'll bring it back to the board, uh, to their comment on the final, to come up with the final product, and at that point, whenever the board blesses, as far as proposed increases, increases in connection fees and rates, we schedule a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we have 60-day timeframe until we implement it. Our, our connection fees are very low compared to other municipals and the county in the area. Um, and our rates are right there at the bottom too, so, um, we're not looking to rent shop to anybody, but just trying to take advantage of this growth too, because every house that goes in, we have a, a small connection fee we could be benefiting from that, that, or capital.
And, and the connection fees on the, on the, on the?
Well.
They're passing on it, they're going.
Yeah, and they, they do pass it on, and in some cases, you will find a large developer, they're, well, they'll finance, and you see, oh, they're going to raise their fees, in a few months, they'll come in and repay most of them. And then the people will, and they'll charge them the new fee. So it pays money for them. And also, with the, uh, we talked to the board in November about paving contract for this fiscal year that would get started in January. And I talked to Tao at excavation point yesterday, they're planning on being out here in 17. And, uh, we're trying to sign down with them for them to start conventionalism, seems to be Valboa. We visit a number of potholes and issues in there.
Are you going to make this, put that in, you know, like, you've had to draw customers?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And right now it's?
And you don't see a comparison, oh, that's what we'll, we'll bring back this.
They'll give you a comparison.
Yeah, and they, the neighboring connection fees, neighboring rates, and water and sewer are different consumption levels, you can see what we have. But, uh, the conventionalism right now is to start on Valboa, because the number of potholes, and they're not moved forward. They, they did caution me that they're going to come out and start working on 17, uh, but they have a few more jobs, so it might take them six months to finish it all, and nothing, just come in and do it all $350,000 worth of work. But we'll get a schedule, keep the price there, and we can also put that on the website, so residents can see what work's going to be done, whether they're doing it or not. And I probably, my, uh, hindsight is just on a starting up safety committee, you know, more administrative, unless someone has some questions.
I, I have a question on that one. Water and sewer, what do you want to, and I think we mentioned the other day, we're in the process of digging this, people are fighting, to the National Water Department, you mentioned.
Well, I'm going to come back to the board, especially, uh, depending on how we decide to move forward with the major project, um, and looking at our staffing, and, and right now, we're just reacting, not doing any proactive maintenance. As I said, we're, we're bringing people in here and hiring them, if it's day rates, we're training them, then off they go. You know, you're telling the manager, like.
And, and I think he needs help, I think.
And, and we have a new advertising out, and I'll come to the board and see how we can fund some of it.
Because after looking and watching all this, there's so many reasons why I can see why this is fair. I just, and I, and I know you're looking at the right things, and you're the right way to sign, so you don't have to.
Well, we're trying to do, but we have to live within that budget too, and there are some options. And if the board decides not to move forward, but we automatically need the project for whatever reason, uh, my backup plan would be to hire more people, and I need them, they're reading users, the other three, they're doing utilities, working, we're getting the trained, licensed, qualified staff.
But don't we need to get a qualified staff in there, either way, you know?
Totally.
Okay. That, that's definitely my question.
Yeah, our, our headcount is low for the, for capital, especially in comparison to utilities. And we, we do have pressure too, with the growth coming in, because every house that comes in to locating lines on the lot, you have that gas line going down the center, you have some that's spending one, two, three, four days locating utilities along that route. And, uh, any, any time anybody's digging, we get called out to do locations, so there's, there's pressures from all across, you know, the community for more responsive customer service. Mr. President, that is, uh, Mr. Halberg, that was a follow-up, and he was talking about grant funding and loans, and that was really just a synopsis of some of the programs out there. And the intent of that was to show you that with our stormwater management that we're working on right now for an SRF application, that's one item, wastewater, we've already approved that facilities plan, we're moving forward, you know, to, from the board, the option to borrow seven to 10 million dollars for those upgrades. The stormwater target was $5 million. And, uh, also put in there that the current application process to go with the water management district, we may be able to get a quarter million dollars in total grant, um, you know, for irrigation work and efficiency in the golf course. A lot of times when that water management district is pressing you to become more efficient, they do have some carrots there, um, to help you out. It's not even a lot of money, but a quarter million dollars in the grant. Uh, with, and, and that, that process starts in July, but we're going to go ahead and grant forward, put in the application, and then we'll bring it to the board if we get approved, and the board can make that decision at that time. But we get, how to get paperwork in six or eight months early. And, uh, we're also going to have a seat at the table on the 19th, uh, for emergency funds. So I'm just trying to show the board that we're making, or where are these opportunities, and we're listening.
Well, when you send something out like that, probably, probably better line.
And again, I think.
I know I'm supposed to guess it, but. Get the quote. Go ahead, Margaret. He's got open stuff. What is this Water Association special district?
Uh, we're a member of the Water Association, a special district.
Yeah, I mean, what, I, there's lots of that, I have to get involved with it, what's going on?
Yeah, they, uh, this district for years has been a member, and it's not cheap, it's about $2,500 to $3,000 a year.
But they're a member of the.
Yes. We just haven't been involved.
And they are helpful, they have financing mechanisms available, and a lot of resources, and they're strictly for special districts, and that's one of those things to see that the table and participate with.
So what if, all right, that's, what if, what's this building, that's only a place?
Uh, they, they put a proposal together because they want to privatize the roads, and, uh, so they can put a gate up at their second entrance. There's strict access to the community, and, uh, we went out and met them, and, uh, we don't have any huge problems with them, they still want us to maintain the stormwater, and the cul-de-sacs in there, but they have some issues that they have not resolved at the county, with access, and the county paid, paid away. Uh, so I told Luis, I says, soon as you get everything straightened out with the county, send it to us, and they'll take it to the board. But to get county parts straightened out.
So I tend to be concerned that on, on one map, it shows that they're responsible for certain things, and on the next map, it shows that we are.
That's their proposal, they want, they want us to maintain the operation maintenance responsibilities for the drainage protection areas and stormwater pipes.
And what about this, where, where that street is, that's not locked down?
Uh, the, uh, that's not real clear enough as their proposal, because they said, well, we want this, but we want you to take that, and like, the county's involved there too, because there's county right in there.
Yeah, so you, you're like, clearly, that is the resolution, allowing them to take over there. And then how, what do they want us, how they backed up that?
No, they haven't backed up, it's just still, the paperwork isn't straight on, who's going to know what, where is it going to go, and the county.
I thought they had to take them over all the way?
And finally, that's.
They won't do it. But we basically wrote, my record, what we voted on was to say that they, we don't have any exceptions to what they're trying to do, but we don't have any power to do it, so they have to go through that.
We thought it was.
Okay?
Okay, so now, now the map is this map, in the yellow, they want us to build, while we voted on it. I mean, I, I'm sure it's perfectly fine, I just don't understand why the.
We voted on just like, they think, they think over the stuff themselves, they don't just want to pass that.
I think that, I mean.
It's, it's, it's dangerous streets.
I mean, we don't think I got this, but you can buy it.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Well, this is what we, this is what we agreed to. And that's not what you, you're going to say. I'm just asking.
Uh, they came, I, I don't think they knew there was, that there were county interests in the right way, that the county, that, that, for.
Well, I guess, my, what, the next question would be, the resolution after we agreed with you? That's what we need, what?
Yeah, we, we agreed to allow them to privatize their roadways.
Based on this map?
Yeah, that, that was their proposal.
So now they're, now they're coming back to us?
They're changing it, yeah, they're changing it. It doesn't matter, all we're saying, our, what our resolution was, or our vote was, is that we are allowing them to privatize their roads, but they still have to be, have to approve. So whatever town approves.
Why, why would the county not approve their maintenance and cul-de-sacs? Why, why does that fall back on us, that's the one, I can understand our nature of the team, maintenance, retention part, because they, the cul-de-sacs are part of the road, why would we have to maintain that stuff? That's the one that proved it.
Uh, I love the, I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, particularly, maybe, just, just something on that.
It could be a hell of a, a county.
And I'm not going to react to it until the county is solid, and then, and then we'll come back and react to it. Um, and I, I feel the same way, and what it is too, is that it's, go out of sun and lake for that, and, and, oh, that is county, by the way, crossing. So there's several aspects of the county involved.
So you wrote down here, only the rate was what they want, or? I put it on the report, I like.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I think in concept, we're in agreement with them, I have kind of a hard time when they say, well, you guys, you still keep responsibility for this behind our gates, it's cul-de-sacs, you know, and pay, well, why are you taking over these roads? But we aren't taking cul-de-sacs where they're.
Or any of the redemption, you know? Is that what is the answer?
I'll wait till I get the county information back, because I can't make the decision on how this is all going to play out until I find out what the county interests on, and the county.
So once you get, once they square things with the county, it'll come back to us for review.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, correct.
But I, I would let them know that we're not really happy about the kinds of maintaining their cul-de-sacs as part of the roads that they agreed to take.
I don't think that's, I mean, part of the issue is, I don't want to piece them. Well, I think, well, part of the issue is, what, what's there now is, we do have to maintain it, because they are our roads. But if they don't privatize it, if they get vacated, they're not rotating, or we don't have an allocation to maintain them. So that's the issue, is what is the county going to agree to vacate? If anything, and so once we know what the county is willing to do, then they can come to us and say, okay, here's what the county is willing to do. Here's what we need you to do based on this plan, you can decide, and that's all.
I mean, I'm just bringing up the other one, that's been, with them with lock gates, and we have to somehow get access to pick something.
Well, we, we've been talking about it this night, and it's, we can't vacate until we're county, because it might be immaterial if they don't.
Exactly. Portions to the platform they did, we no longer, they're, they're no longer under our control. So is that, so until we know it's under our control, was left to be under our control, we won't, there's no way for us to answer it.
I got just a few other mind things to break, but I'm, I'm, the, the golf and the district employees, that you, you can go on. Why do they take the notice and send it there?
I answered, yes, I'll, I'll have to just put them back under, and send it.
So that was just, we just. On that one, it's, well, it's.
I don't see any reason why either way, for you.
Yeah, but we, we have a question, we can have an opportunity to hold it. I'd like to see a place to go, yeah, discuss it. Uh, curiosity, the website, the, the SNL district website, who is in charge of updating? And I'll tell you why I ask. The last employees really from office in 2001, can you? Not the cops, like, in district financial, uh, but in, uh, security, whatever. Who, who's in charge of updating our own website in the community?
The media's scheduled, no, neither, not at all, they're, I mentioned, next year, maybe.
They'd schedule it, add it to the ass. And we can update those documents, you're saying, financial reports.
I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying financials, what's not up there, I'm saying, for me to look at the, uh, technical reports, and graphics, and whatever, like that, that, that doesn't suck.
So previously, I think that was something that Percy handled, to be honest, I didn't know they got a photo for the website, so that was something she is, done routinely. Um, if they're sent to me, then, then I guess that will be me.
Well, let me put it this way, in the new organizational chart, which I was hoping to see today, that obviously we're not going to, we've got, we've got a number of.
That, in my opinion, once we finally find a candidate, we can hire for that general office foot position, that would be something that was longer that.
So until then, there'll be.
Well, until then, it'll be me.
Aaron and Emily, tell me both post things.
What, right?
So Kelly and Aaron will both post and update the website.
Okay, I just want to tell you that, I mean, none of your reports are up?
And, and is there a historical, yeah, I haven't seen a security report.
I, I mean, no, nothing.
There is a month to be, do you want to tell what your reports are today?
I know code enforcement, I've seen those.
There's code enforcement, there's a traffic one, I've got them all printed, if you want to.
I mean, I think they're going to give us a report, not like, on, on.
These are all the reports from 2021, if you could pay Marcus every month, would be a good thing.
21, okay, I'll, I'll ask the guys in the back to make these, whatever.
So people in the district would know what the heck's going on.
Can you see that?
That's wonderful. I, is this the new organizational chart?
That is the, uh, proposed organizational chart.
My employees, any of them?
No.
Huh? That's all we have.
Uh.
Yeah, it has Mike's name on it.
Turned it out and grabbed the wrong one.
So is this new or the old?
Uh, that's the old one.
This is the old?
I should say, yeah, it's almost the existing one, and we, we revised, um, that, and my intention today was to let the board know that we'll bring a handout to them at the next meeting, report for priorities and revise the order chart, and then.
I just want to know when I'm going to get this, you told me I was going to get it this meeting, obviously, it's not true.
It's, it's ready, it's brought the wrong thing over. I had the old ones, the next ones next to me in the stack, and I was grabbing the wrong one. I'll send it to you today.
I, we need it discussed, not just debated. I assume it's for everybody.
And, and that was the, the point is, is we'll bring back the proposed revised organizational chart, also the staff priorities and proposed board priorities at the next meeting for a handout, as the board has set a strategic plan, meaning the second. a handout, as the board has set a strategic plan, meeting the second, beginning in February, and that way bring all the priorities out, the proposed staffing changes, and get that in a workshop format, get the board's blessing to move forward, and that will drive our budgeting for the next year, and also our work plan.
Well, you know, there's a lot going through the cracks right there. And, and I know you're in a tough situation, but my patience level, I'm just gonna take that.
If you look a little closely, there's a lot going through the cracks for a hundred years.
I was gonna say, the cracks been, been wide open for several years.
Let me, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
I got an email on Wednesday, from Ariel. It's about this email from Emily, about utilities, customer service, super bowl chefs, I'm sorry. It's about a, a scam going on, utility scam. So, let me tell you the history on this. Emily on January the fourth at nine oh five in the morning sends it to Ariel. Ariel on January the fifth at nine thirty three in the morning sends it apparently to the supervisors and you. And in it, it said, we're gonna get hold of the sheriff's department. It tells you what the scam is. It tells you that they're gonna get hold of the sheriff's department to make them aware, and then send out an email blast to the community, letting them, letting them know to be aware of the scam and hopefully avoid any problems. Today is Friday. I haven't seen anything.
It hasn't, uh, community that we can see that.
It has not, and I have not been informed that we've brought anything back to the sheriff's department, that I followed Emily today, like, I can walk through.
I mean, to me, this is a pretty serious issue, if somebody tries to scam off our, our residents. This started on Tuesday in the morning when she found out the matter, and it's Friday. Nobody's seen it, no problem.
I was out at the office on Tuesday, so when I got it on Wednesday is when I sent it to her.
Oh, I'm just saying, what did you crash?
Emily did complete the, the link on the sheriff's, the spot, the individual reporting for, um, I'd say non-emergent, but something that doesn't require a decade. There's, um, a process for you to do that online, it's the, the report, and it was done on Wednesday. So I will, I will circle back with her this morning.
I mean, I don't think we want to tell the rest of you.
Absolutely.
Let me ask you another thing. Budget summary is all fun. David, I need your help on this, because I read that our budget is supposed to be published, it's supposed to be balanced. Is that correct?
I don't know anything about budget issues, but I can look into it.
Well, it says here, uh, as local government in the state of Florida, summary of the budget per two hundred, Florida statutes, which maintains adoption of a balanced budget. Our budget that we published is not a balanced budget. Page twenty-three's budget falls for, and it's the budget summary all on. Revenues of ten million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty, expenditures of thirteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two.
What page is that?
I'm sorry?
What page is that?
I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I'll get answers for you.
Okay, are we done? Are we done?
With Chris?
Yes, I'm in her email.
With Chris?
Yeah.
I know this is going to go in some court-
Golf, golf financials.
It had, yeah, IMF, was, did we clean up down there or on the side?
Oh, that's like, I don't have to ask George, but I gave him a work order and asked him to take care of it, and we were out in the field yesterday, meeting with the landowner, with the hedge line, with the access road, and he said he was taking care of it. And the, we had a good conversation with him, we're gonna reclaim that part and even run a survey line on it, because it almost looks like it's approaching his property. He doesn't care that much, nice fellow, but we're gonna take care of it.
Mr. Barner?
And I think the fact they didn't break a lot of that rock off, and it really contaminated that hedge.
You know what the problem with Barner was? All said it to the wrong ego of us.
Yeah, I know, he gave me his updated email address, I called him.
And the guy with the double driveway, we're not, oh, how's it?
No, I sent him some of the background on the policy, and then talked to Drew and said, nope, try the county first. I don't think it'll go far with them either.
Okay, Michael. I mean, typically with golf financials, I can send it, and I'm just assuming that there's questions I will answer them. I don't, we've never handled it in fashion. Well, if you're ready to ask some questions. And I was talking about corporate financials, we're talking your end financials, the original, on the original agenda, so how long has it been, the corporate financials, that we're closing out here?
Yeah, let's go here and work.
Okay.
I guess since I'm the one that made a mistake over the other part, I'd go ahead overall to plan. You guys had a pretty good year. I mean, the way I figure it out, you, you planned that twenty-one thousand, lose twenty-one thousand, wanna make twenty-one thousand, you need to actually make seventy thousand. So overall, I thought, yeah, good for you. If you look at the breakdown of it, there is, there is-
Sorry, are we, are we doing that September? The, the original, the original budget for last fiscal year was, was minus one eighty. We revised it to minus seventy, I believe, or minus eight, seven, or eight, nine.
Minus seven, oh, I'm sorry.
And we finished, and we finished at plus one, one. So I want to make sure I'm on the same page as you.
I am, I am concerned a little bit, I think a golf rate, your green fees for the year, like, you picked up like a hundred fifty-three thousand, you're pretty good, so you had over five thousand there from that. And if you break it down, and I think that kind of factor, somebody's comment before, that these average, what we're getting per round is not what it should, and I think that just points it out.
All right, well, I want to, I want to look at this here, so, if we're gonna, year to date, we did eighty thousand rounds, budgeted to seventy-two thousand rounds, which is a difference of seventy-five hundred rounds, correct? The biggest difference in, in rounds that we increased was five, was fifty-five hundred extra rounds, uh, of which-
Are you, you're not looking at the right month, you're going, this year, or about at the end of the month? I, I have public rounds fading up, a little over four thousand, outing rounds fading up twelve hundred and ninety-four, and I member rounds being down twenty, I think it's twenty-three hundred. If it makes sense with the, the voting, you know?
That's last year's, that's not the budget.
Well, yeah, you know, you're joking, I don't care. I'm just commenting that I think what that tells you is that the amount of money you're getting per round, you have an opportunity to make more money. That's all I'm saying.
So, when we, I haven't done that previously, but we've done that study before. Typically, our, our average ABR per member round was, was, where that nineteen dollar round came in, nineteen, I believe it was a nineteen or twenty dollars per round. I believe our public rate is, is up around thirty, is the last time I looked at it, and this is going back on my way, so that's, um-
What, your public rate?
Right.
And what you're getting, or what you, what you're paying your charge? Two different things, I'm hearing, right? That's what you're getting.
Right, if you're looking at our, our KPIs here, that looks like-
I'm not, I'm not looking at you as a defendant, I'm just pointing out-
No, I want to make sure, no, I want to make sure you have your information, so if you, if you want me to do our average dollar per round for last fiscal year, I would gladly give it to you. I want to make sure you have the breakdown. It is, it is not, not as clearly as it will state, because it's, it's different, if you could break it down as total, you, you could break it down differently, so I mean, we can, we can steer however you want. I can break it down by member, and I can break it down by public, and I can break it down, we can all do all of it together, which includes outings. I mean, I mean, I could spend a couple hours and put together a whole spreadsheet for it if you want.
It's broken down that way. I mean, it's, it's broken down by member, outing, public.
Rounds.
That's rounds, that's rounds.
Eight thousand rounds, probably.
Correct.
And out of that eighty thousand rounds, you achieved a million seventy in revenue.
And your non-member average round?
No, out of those eighty thousand rounds, you have, you have to put your membership in there as well. The membership round, you're not disagreeing with that.
But your non-member average round was thirty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, which was two dollars and a cent less than you.
So if you wanted to do that math real quick, you came off eighty thousand rounds, you have to add up the public and outing rounds, which to me looks like thirty-five thousand rounds. So that's-
And that's what goes into the million?
That's what we're going to agree with, the, the membership round is number.
I didn't bother with the same one.
I, I didn't, no, those numbers are accurate, right, but if you want to break out eighty dollars, I'd be happy to do it for you. If you want to do it, I-
I think you have an opportunity to get more money, more money, I assume you're a defendant.
I'm not a defendant anyway, I, I just want to have it correct down.
I assume they're certain that you're not-
Well, absolutely, and, and my job is to find as much revenue as I can, so we're having opportunities, we're gonna do it.
That shows thirty dollars, thirty dollars.
Right, that's what I thought, around thirty dollars, membership should be around four.
And one of the ways to increase the public rounds is by discounting them when needed to fill the holes.
Right, so a, a big chunk of those, that thirty dollars, is the one we're requiring, which is a huge portion of what we have left to sell. I mean, we're selling at it twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars, maybe in season, feet, or half a tube.
Where is the membership round?
So if you're, if you're, are you on the P and L?
Yeah.
So on the P and L, it's happening, your, your round's combined cart fees, and membership, membership falls down, uh, below other golf permit, it says dues monthly, it says dues income monthly.
I've got six hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Right, and then you gotta add the cart fees, because it's broken out.
So that's another million dollars.
So it was, yeah, it was a little over nine, yeah.
Uh, is that, is that your golf membership, one, one million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy? This year versus the last year of my hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven? No? No.
Right, so on there, so if you're looking at it, you're looking at, I'm sorry, I'm not following, because I can't look at the sheet. Yes, if you combine the cart fees and the membership, that's, that's the number you're seeing there. Because the membership is broken out into membership dues and cart fees, which, the million thirty-nine thousand is the current number, when you, when you put your membership on the hole.
The membership issue is about twenty-two dollars per round.
Right. Now, what-
I, are you gonna do this? Did I, did I, on October, and I don't want to repeat October, because the first month of the year is not working. But I do have a question, is why haven't they a format change?
So, this format is the one that we provided every month that I've been your general manager.
What happened to the way of the E C?
The other, the other district page is, is still submitted, when I submitted its file, it's like fifth or sixth tab on the file, it just wasn't, I don't know, with the new company, if they didn't include that. So-
I'm confused, am I?
Well, well, I, I don't know, I don't know how it works on the district side when, when that gets into the packet, if, if, if Mark or whoever needs to include their separate page, but if he's correct, that, that separate page is, is not-
They're breaking down the stuff coming here like this. You think that you, like,
That file should be included in, in the packet that I sent to the district.
So you give it into a-
Right, so we just need to-
We publish that, and then we include this.
What is happening now in my file, I think?
The recent risk that we need these comparisons is because it reports the difference of the food side, I think the balance. And when you look at history for other than that, you don't see it, it's all one. And we wanted to see a couple years ago, how the food operation was going, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why, that's the file we refer to. So we need that published with the financials.
I'll follow up on it, see why, why it wasn't there.
Yeah, and maybe just for somebody to just put the packet here. But I do, I do urge the board to, to look through the finances that we sent out, that does have, it does have to be broken out. It's, it's in a different format, um, it, it does look at the operation as one operation, but it still shows you all, it still shows you, that part is present. It, it just doesn't provide quite what that does, um, but I, I just don't want you to get stuck on that one page, I'd like to, to see where it comes from.
I'll go to the page.
That's fine, they're better, we agreed, but let's go better.
I got a couple other things, you want to do my- Problems with the restaurant, of course, challenges with the restaurant. Is there a problem with the lighting, with the curtains and the balcony of the restaurant? Thank you, Drew?
Yes, so, and I'm trying to work through that as well, so, one of the, one of the working, they work, they work fine, but they are, they, they work on a battery pack, and it all works fine, except the battery pack only lasts an hour and a half, two hours. So you start buying, they just start shutting off right now. So we'll have to go back to, there, there's a puzzle along there, like we used to have, so we'll have to other things, so I'll stay on top of it to utilize them. That was something that I, I don't know if anybody would realize that they were cheaper than battery packs in such a short amount of time, I started getting down there that.
So you're looking at something you bought, I assume?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, we just bought it, surely they're at the bar.
Right, so we're talking, we're talking a, a very fine face to that, probably in the wall, but we're not wanting a big issue, but yes. I agree with you.
So you go-
We're talking about that, I don't even have to expect, right? We're probably talking about spending less than fifty bucks to get one, that's not a good deal.
Well, yes, I would maintain that our curtains, we like-
Baby, I am, can we have curtains? Yeah, I would win the long term, so I'll make a park.
That would be the- I just blew my mind. When I, when I asked for a curtain, one time, they said, yeah, but, it's, it's, go on, go on, it's just, let me just tell you a couple other things that have happened. I was with a friend on the other night at the bar, and she was telling me, her and a bunch of girl went golf in the morning, came into the restaurant, said, I need a table for dinner for eight or nine or what have you. And they were told, I'm sorry, there's no, no reservation. Wait, what did they? Then she goes, comes back to five o'clock with a couple couples, and this table is all empty. And she comes to me. So I find out that the problem is you're short staff because of the quote, which is a perfectly good excuse, except she wasn't booked, she was going to be pressured to be booked. So we have to work, it's a training, to tell people to-
Sure, and I'm not sure exactly how else to communicate with her. Obviously, we don't want to tell people we have a COVID, I mean, I don't think we have a COVID issue, but I don't know-
But you're short staff.
Sure, but you also, right, and I'm fine with communicating, I mean, obviously, I, I talk to my folks about how they communicate to the public about finance part between of how they communicate these issues, but, you know, even on a regular basis, if we have two hundred tables in there, we can't sit two hundred tables at, at five o'clock. That's, I, I've, I've stated this back a few times, we, 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 we're lucky to have enough staff to seat two hundred tables at one time. We can't do it, you have to have fifty servers. If, if, there's just no way to do that. So there are times in the nights that, that I work with the staff to say, look, you know, when, when we reach our seating capacity at five or five-thirty, we can have six o'clock available, and that is part- we can have six o'clock available, and that is part of the carrying process, and we don't, but yes. We can always communicate that all the way.
I'm just telling you, there's a lady came over and she confused. Let me ask you, yes, let's do this one. Where is the acts of the, uh, absolutely, uh, you've got to take leave of action. We're going to discuss that at this meeting.
Right, um, I, I actually, I had a short discussion with Mr. Eric because he wanted to bring it up. And, and I asked if, if, you know, when I spoke to him, you know, we need to have some discussions on that. It was on the agenda, so I don't have.
Well, sure, we don't.
Right.
Cause that was part of it.
I'm happy, but, and, and if we're on that discussion, I know we have, we have something I want to discuss with Mr. Halping later, or, or you guys, Mr. Halping. Um, I think what's in there is fine. I, I have no issue with what's in there. I think we need to add additional stuff to it. So that, that basically covers it. It doesn't cover everything. Well, there's always going to be hurdles for them, and everybody could have a different situation. So somehow, I don't know how we, what way can we continue to.
Well, I thought.
You know, either get me involved and authority to issue those discounts in those areas, or if they'll come back to the board.
I'm going to tell them that.
Correct, and I don't think it's wrong. I just think there needs to be more options.
So we're supposed to discuss that today. So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is, is that we, you know, and, and obviously we have a discussion on it, but I think we need to try to cover all bases. That, that covers a, a, a very basic scenario. And, and obviously, with the COVID situation, kind of, is what really brought this out, is, um, obviously, Mr. Don Chan had a pretty unique situation. So how do we handle a unique situation? A lot of these situations are going to become unique situations. Either A, I need to have more authority to grant that, if the board will allow that, or the board needs to have, you know, more of these are going to have to come to the board. I mean, I don't think you can put two, you know, two more sentences in there and cover every basis that's ever been caught aboard. This is not going to happen.
All right, maybe that's, and I would agree, there's no way that that's going to. It just, we have to have more compassion and better understanding of the demographics of our membership. And, and do those things that are necessary, not only satisfy the member, but to satisfy the district and the all. And we can do that, and it shouldn't, it can't be that difficult to do.
If you, you could put together a five person panel that just hears these and says.
I don't want.
I don't, I don't.
I, I was hoping we were going to have a discussion on this. Obviously, you're not prepared to do it. But the line that really bothers me is the provided amount of the time this would be applied to a membership in the future. Probably we need to change that line and make it applicable at the current time. I don't think you have, if a guy pays five thousand dollars, whatever it might be, gets injured and play blah blah blah, you say, okay, we'll get your credit for next year, instead of giving them back their money from this.
Correct.
I think we should change.
I'm slightly, I'm trying to follow you along there, so.
Be right, refunding and stuff.
Right, so if I buy my membership this year, I could just use five thousand dollars, for example. I play six months. I had earned about the other six months. So I've already, I've already paid about five thousand dollars, or since I missed half of it, basically, I'm going to get twenty five hundred dollars off my next year membership because I didn't play half of it. Now I have the opportunity to do that.
I don't think it should be applied for next year. I think we should, we should get them back.
So your thing, your opinion is we should refund them. I'm okay with that. I mean, obviously, that's a lot, it's, it's, it's a little more favorable than I, but we can handle it.
I assume it doesn't have to be. These are supposedly accepted.
Uh, I mean, there's probably eight, nine, ten of them here. I said, no, this is not, this is not, it's not.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry. This is my. Well, maybe.
I don't, I don't, I don't want this. I don't know what I want.
Well.
It's not on the agenda. I have no capital.
Well, I was at Beverly, you weren't here last time. I'm sorry. We discussed it last time, and I asked if we discussed this at first.
Everybody. My job. I think Mike was just supposed to discuss it, and he was asked to look at it during his fourth.
It's not, it should have been.
I mean, the question is, you're putting on the M F X meeting. I don't want to agenda. What's on the next meeting?
Why, for the next meeting?
I don't have a discussion.
But on, on this, we went for a ride, we can, you meet a couple months ago when you guys made this.
Yes.
Does anything happen to?
A lot of those projects are going to be completely.
On.
Some of those projects, I think, even if they're not, make sure the bunker I have is pre-charred up. I can rip that up in the middle of the summer. I was just asking what it says. So obviously, all those projects are not completed, but they're going to be completed in summer time.
I need a bunker on sixteen. No, so bunker on sixteen has not been built. The bunker on, uh, eleven hasn't been moved. Uh, three hasn't been done. I mean, I was just guessing. I found it. I forgot. Right, so when I get ready to do those projects, I'm going to have to bring your dirt back. Cause we got, or we have to figure out some way we can get the dirt to build. We're going to ask him, Tommy Banks, anytime he's going to pull, if anybody wants to get rid of any excess dirt, to let us know, and we'll store it somewhere, just so I have dirt to do those projects with. If not, we're going to have to bring the dirt to accomplish what we do that.
Okay, what, what do you know?
Is number nine beautiful? Back right, back right, I don't know where it was built or whatever, but it's not constructed correct. So.
So what, what do we do to fix it?
We ninja tied. We ninja tied all the bridges this past week. So this summer, what needs to happen is that we need to cut the collar out. We need to get everywhere at least the water she flows, or we need to set the green out and crown it up where the water gets off the back of it. When you run the water or when you get rains, the water sets in that saddle and that bag like.
We have the.
I think they're.
Okay, they're, they're. They're going to fix it this summer. What's going on with number thirteen? There's this line or something. I'm.
That's a mole.
That's a mole.
We, we got, we, we finally got, got.
Did you get it?
Yes.
And last but not least, number fourteen, little T box that we spent one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for. When do you think we can fix it so we can do that?
Well, I had this discussion again with Mr. Eric earlier this week. So as I ran it on, you guys are. What's happening?
I played a lot. I was out there the whole week. I mean, it's just, it's.
It's red, red. Well, it's tropical signal red. I'm, it's tropical. It's hot now, but it wasn't. So if you remember, we took the dirt off the right side of the cart path over there, right?
Yeah.
To build that T. So you seen what happened as soon as I stripped it as well, right? All that stuff came out.
Yeah.
So whenever you have new sprays down on the ground, you, you can't go after over the herbicide. You can put your pre-emergent down. But that being said, I mean, I pushed, I pushed them Monday, and I fertilized them again this morning.
A hundred and thirty five thousand? That definitely is still not right.
I agree.
I'm just saying.
I'm not going to disagree with you.
Hundred and thirty five? All right, uh, what was the question? Since you wrote it, I'll do it. Oh, I gotta do it. Like I hit the nose this time. The new practice facility, the chipping area, that was going to open in June or July. In July. Of which. How are we doing?
It's pretty close. It's really close. I just, the only part, the only part that I'm worried about right now is cutting down.
Is what?
Cutting, cutting everything down. I mean, the grates are, are pretty good right now. You got one spot on the cart. But, and, and that'll be happening because the district. Security.
Okay, so I just thought I'd, I'm totally concerned. I'm not.
I'm getting ready for it now. I got a hundred minutes left. I'm getting, I'm getting ready to, to lay it out.
Right, that's all I got to give you. I got one more. I've seen one of these media releases that you took out, and I'm, I'm curious about one. Can you give us an update the next time on how much money we made? On this tournament that we had?
Actually. Sure, I have a list. Um.
How's your?
So, okay, well, I'll forward it to you. The Citrus Golf Trail Open, which was the men's event that we had in early December, that event is not a festival, free day event, and they brought in about nine thousand dollars in free beer revenue. Uh, it's open. The three day total for all, all free beer revenue was about fifteen thousand dollars. I can just compare that to the last few years. It's about double last year, the last four years. So obviously, that was a, a good venture. Um, the ladies, that was a lot. I just got these, these numbers put together. Uh, by the way, the event, a lot of really good, they all had a couple of party ladies, which was, was fun. Um, we had a scammer return, split them into a chaperone on the final day, just to get people, follow the road and get out of here. Uh, that event brought in thirty one thousand dollars in revenue. That's just pertaining to that event itself. Now, all the parents or whoever might have been expected, if they spent any money, approached off of the restaurant. I mean, I can't contribute that directly to this event, but if you're right with something to that, thirty one thousand dollars.
Is that better than the outside of it?
So that, no, that free beer revenue, the outing, yeah, and obviously the restaurant.
And then in conjunction with that, I'm just curious, I, I saw this separate tourism, these kind of moves. But there's this, uh, tourist development tax that collected one million one hundred and seventy four thousand dollars, and they use it for events. Do you get any of that?
But, so we don't get any of that. So the, the, the sign of that itself is not to get that money directly. So the, so by the way, the T D C, the tourist development, there's two percent tax added to anybody that stays in a rental, you can have a rental house for, there's a certain time. If you stay in a hotel room, you're paying nine and a half percent tax, and then seven and a half, the extra two goes to the tourist development. That's what it's spent, while trying to get more tourists in, in the country, which is included in that. The Citrus Golf Trail Open, which was the men's event, they applied for an agreement with T D C and they received it. So the event got that grant, which helped bring that, which, um, indirectly, that money followed two months. Okay, now, that same tourist development, as, as, as far as, as their agreement with the Citrus Golf Trail, the T D C helped them, and the, T D C is the one that informed Airstream Ventures for all of their events here. Airstream Ventures in turn, they were out of a settlement for a bonus year for that trip. They used all the registrations, they handled all the rest, but that was not a cost to us to run this event. That was all paid for by that two percent tax.
So they don't get anything.
They don't really direct them, and it can't, it can't be spent in that fashion.
But we, you're getting extra tax as well.
Right, so buying, buying, well, that money has to be spent outside of Hines Town. To bring people. That, T D C money is, it, it has to be spent to bring people. If you can't advertise to people in Hines Town, it's, it's true, it needs to be spent to advertise outside of Hines Town.
Marketing.
Marketing.
People working in the area of.
Yeah, she's sorry?
Yeah, she is. Have you guys got any work?
I don't know. All the communication, she, she couldn't communicate with the, the John that was going to handle it, and I've, I've seen all those. And he, I don't know if we're ready to find somebody else, but he seems to have lack of his own communication. She's been there. I know that, um, I, I don't know, or maybe she knows more than I do at this time.
Right now, she's.
It's not a bad issue. A date has not been set, and I don't know if she has something for that one time. But she's been, she's been asking for dates for several weeks now.
Oh, we're very keen about the ladies and the men coming back this year.
So in conjunctions to the, the men's event, which is through the minor golf tour, we're going to have, we have other events with them as well, so they're small. So they'll be back for sure, but I don't know if, per se, the Citrus Golf Trail Open. The week, yeah, so, so that event, that event, it will come to all of the news because there was a hundred men that could hose their garlands that long, really. That's part of the trail itself, or there's other courses, but they don't belong to the trail. As it sits right now, the ladies event has been scheduled to move to Hines Town, River Bridge the next year. I think, you know, we have some participation, I don't know if you guys can pop forward. Uh, he helped us out, but he works at, he saw how we could pass that one. I don't know if there's any other courses that kind of has the staff or facility to put that on. That was a big deal. So there is a very good possibility that at least the open division will be here in the next year. You can't go there yet, but there's a possibility that, there's a floor of forty nine section of that event that they could possibly move, which is actually, probably like new for us to have more. So it's still coming here with us, and all of you know as soon as I can, so we don't have.
Okay, so we'll be fine.
Absolutely. I mean, that's a good reason for us.
Quick comment that I put me through all the time. From what I'm seeing, I think the service and customer. Looking at a customer, that's greatly improved. I think our membership is on the right track. I think there's a lot of good things starting to happen in there. But so far, I have been considering very different voices on how they feel about, about the selections that he's come up with. We needed something new, and it's great to have.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I will pass it along as well. Uh, before I know it's moving on, I would like to see if there's an aggressive Mr. Alvey situation. Um, as far as, because it's got to lose a lot of those in-house, but it's kind of up right now, so, um, they, uh, I, if, who, who knows what it is? Right. Right. I'm going to be aggressive. If I could, you know, we're talking about, you know, we're trying to fix the situation, but you guys didn't approve of taking our comments into my voice today. I should hope it's short.
It's just about him being.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So. I can, I can try to give you the short version of it. Right, he, he's here to do this, so the short version is, he's taking a medical, if he don't give you permission, I'll apply this credit to the second half payment. That is done with fifteen.
Yeah, it's under half. Yeah, I've had, yeah. Here, I've had spine surgery on April December, and I can't play. I mean, we've had several opportunities that medical reasons, or twenty five reasons, or half a night. But it's all been a murder of time. Wouldn't be playing in the camp. In this particular case, I can't, I had a stop lane on the November fifteenth, I haven't played since then, and, uh, it's three months now, and the surgery for the period, and I was cut the field. So that timeline pretty, pretty messed up. So what I was asking, I asked Andy, and he never got back, but man, I'm embarrassed. But, uh, but what I'm asking for, my second payment's due on January thirty first. Why can't I just make that credit on that second payment, which actually we pay for golf near dance anyway? So, uh, this, in effect, it's the same thing as the figure membership. I was asking to get this credit on this next payment, and I didn't. There's not a lot of that. I think if you were to turn me down, which you probably will, because he said the. I, I wouldn't, if you were to turn me down, which you probably would, because he said the tackle is later, and, uh, pretty simple. Uh, but, uh, I, I wouldn't have changed the, the review before, uh, before they put it, put it again. So I started asking for it, to take the credit on my next payment, which I think is, in effect, it's the same thing as, same thing as, probably is on the future payment. So, so, so I'm asking for it.
On your, uh, payment number six, this is.
Yeah, eighty plus membership.
Okay, so.
One half, so the equation half with eighty plus membership.
So you do that on March.
Yeah.
So Toyota was certified.
Oh, yeah, she's, she's, she had very much, but she, she was there, but.
Okay, so what's the second part?
Half of the, half eighty plus membership, so it didn't make it to that. On the month of July, half paid in January 31st.
For one person?
For one person.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's six hundred, six hundred and eighty of, uh. That's, I didn't want, I wanted to turn down, which I thought I would, if I was, if I had to sit down and tackle this with Andy, and, uh, we had to come back and ask for the review this last month coming in, down before the 31st again.
So I'm totally able to counter that, the, 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 as a consensus, related to all of that process. It, it is slightly, as far as that, from what you just read, it's, it's, it's different than that, but.
You mean? I'm happy we can like that, good consensus.
Yeah, I think we can do a consensus, that's part of making that, authorizing him to make that, make that determination.
Men, men here.
I think we need to look forward to something preliminary to doing that. A formal rewrite of the policy. I think we need to give the general manager more flexibility. I mean, this is definitely that customer group, it's all good.
I, I agree with Eric, hey, that. I know when, when I came on the board, it's a terrible, we have too much flexibility.
Right.
And actually, I don't want you to come close to that, because we have 50 different memberships.
Just one on nine.
Exactly.
Well, so one on nine.
I, I don't, uh, you know, I, I agree with what you brought in, but I like the idea of super me here asking.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
I think a good, a good idea would be to give them that flexibility now pending the rewrite of the policy. So once the, you know, thing was, you got the flexibility until the policy is re, is, is modified to what the board wants.
I'll give you a sentence for that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't agree with it, really.
Well, I agree with, the other, the other side of that is Andy not giving an answer to running stuff.
You know, I, correct, and, and I'll take the one for that, because Andy brought some, you know, he brought it towards me, and, and, you know, I told him that I need to more quickly to do that. So I'd rather apologize to Mr. Howling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go on.
One of the things that came up when you were on was we were already in CPR classes.
So my last port on, I actually just checked them out earlier, was from a couple of weeks ago from the gentleman who hosts those classes. He apologized for the delay because of the holiday season, it's a technicality, and I'm still waiting on dates. Uh, what we've explained to them is, give us the dates you're available. Let us know how many people you're able to accommodate in one class. And we will, we have, we have the capability of doing it through our, uh, new recreation software to set up like an event where you can share the link, and if you're interested, you just go online. We can, we can confirm your resident, all, all the good bells and whistles that come with our stuff. I still would not cotton with dates yet, so that's all I'm waiting for, so that we can send that to them. I don't personally even know any other person or firm that we could contact to do this. We weren't fully spoke before, but, yeah, still, still holding, waiting for a date. I can, I'll send a call email and just keep bugging until I get them, but we're pretty much ready to pull the trigger as soon as we get some dates.
I can imagine. Can you make this bomb generally for employees or managers?
So I think it depends mostly on the, the department. I know, for me, my recreation employees are required to be CPR certified, and they all are. Um, it's probably been close to two years since they've done it, so I know that it's probably time that they would certify.
With my.
Do, do your employees have requirements for CPR certification? Okay, so not required for them, but highly recommended that they are. So, um, I know some particular physicians have that requirement on there. It's in reservations, but it's one. Um, so we will definitely, we can stick some employees in there while we see her. We'll certainly do that. I'm just waiting on dates, so that we can create the event.
Shouldn't have the management staff in CPR twice a night, in the restaurant? No, it should be one out every. At all times.
Yeah. I'm not sure how that, that, that really works necessarily, but as far as a company, we don't have that requirement. The good news is, uh, all, all the folks that are in those managerial positions have volunteered to. Um, I know, I don't know how it works if you have a pool, if I get up somebody to receive that. But we're not, everything that I know, we are not required to. I think it's, I start, all my department heads and managers do it. Nobody's ever turned it down since we, we're willing to do that, so it hasn't been.
I would think our security staff would also be CPR. Get back. First, security staff.
Right now, right now.
And following up on an earlier item, I'd like to be sure everybody knows that we, you know, if you call the company, scan, ask them out.
Yes, I would, thank you. That was one thing that I was gonna point out, is that, um, folk with a contact at the Sheriff's Department, um, we did the right thing by filing the report. I've gone ahead and sent out the email. It has been posted for the last couple of days on the door, but we're gonna get it in mailboxes. The next thing that I'm gonna do is, um, reach out to their Public Informations Officer and see if we can get that information shared on the Mountain County Sheriff's Department Facebook page in an effort to minimize, you know, victims that would fall to this game. And obviously, we'll post it on our social media, on the blog.
Good.
Fair.
Yeah.
I'm very impressed. Good question. Very good. This question's good.
Wasn't 38.